September ninth, two thousand and ten, meeting of the Goffstown Planning Board. It is now seven P.M. We'll go around the room and introduce ourselves. Brian.
I'm Brian Rose, I'm the town planner.
Steve Dutton, alternate member of the board. Phil with the bands.
Alan Yatton, Chair.
Barbara Griffin, Planning Board Member.
Carlos Adams.
Tim Redmond, Vice Chair.
Carl Foley, Alternate.
Terms of business agenda, I would like to just bring up one item before we get into minutes for a second. I had an opportunity to meet with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the ZBA, and there was a certain expression, they'd like to have the ten minutes of our time some evening to talk about their concerns with some potential aspects of our zoning ordinance with some recommendations and some ideas. And I thought it might be a practical way for us to combine our efforts in terms of what we're talking about for any modifications, revisions, or proposals we want to make to the zoning order for the coming year. And I wanted to get a consensus for the board that we would allow them to have fifteen minutes at the start of our next meeting for that purpose. Any board members have a comment? It's a good idea.
Should we consider that almost like our first workshop on the zoning? And if we have any suggestions, bring them in ourselves, or just hear from the ZBA at that point?
I think it can be a general discussion for a little bit, yes.
Okay.
So could you send out the invitation to the members of the CBA if they'd like to come?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and also, we were looking at that agenda, and it's quite short. So if we do want to have more significant discussion, I think that would be a good time to start.
Why don't you just allocate some time on our agenda schedule for that event, whatever you think gets required, whether it's fifteen minutes, ten minutes, or a half an hour. And we'll allot that time for that purpose on our second meeting in September. I would take the minutes from August twelfth, two thousand and ten. There's some action needed. Does anybody have a motion, corrections, or additions, or deletions to the minutes as recorded? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor for the minutes of?
Motion to approve.
Well, here is second.
Second.
Motion made by Barbara, seconded by Phil to approve the minutes of August twelfth, two thousand and ten, as written. Any comments? I move the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm standing, I wasn't present.
Steve abstains.
No, I wasn't here either.
Motion carries. Excuse me?
I wasn't here either.
And Carl was not here. You can still vote on the minutes, though, even though you're not here.
Can we continue on them? And you have eight sitting, you have both alternates here, making a total of eight, which would be the voting alternate.
Steve to start. We'll alternate as things go through here this evening. Any comments on the, our correspondence and FYIs listed in our agenda from the members of the board? And in your package this evening is a last-minute correspondence from Baldwin and Callan, PlLC, which will be part of or attentive to one of our hearings this evening. Hopefully you'll have an opportunity to glance through it and see what this is all about, because I have no idea at the moment.
Do you have a line?
Yes, Phil? Does anybody have anything else that we wish to discuss before we move into our agenda for this evening? And I will take, it's been a request to continue for the Walton Site Plan Map Nine Lot One Oh Seven to a date uncertain. We have not had any action or any presentations on this, so technically we have not accepted the application as being complete and ready for hearing. Brian, can you bring us up to speed on what the request is?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant received the comments from staff on the site plan, and they had some concerns that, in talking to the owners, that that was, it was going to be a large, larger undertaking than what the owners had anticipated. They came to the town asking whether or not they could split the project and do the residential portion without having to do the site plan, which we told them, yes, that that's a possibility to do. However, they also are, they are still required to get Shoreland Protection Act permits, and so that would require review by the, by the DES. And they, at this time, are wanting to sort of lay it on the table, and the concern that I had with that is, well, it's not an accepted plan yet, we haven't done any public hearings yet, we technically don't have even an accepted application. And they were requesting waiver of most of the development regulations. That was a concern of mine, and that was the reason for a lot of the comments that were in the report. My suggestion is, is that, and I did one little slide on this, that we would not accept the application as a complete application due to the amount of waivers requested, and allow them to resubmit without penalty of fees for renoticing fees and any additional fees for items that weren't paid for initially for a period of one year, after which all fees would be required again. So if they, if they want to come back to the town when they've got their act a little bit better together, and they feel like, you know, a complete application is what they've got, then, you know, we would consider that application.
Now, have we traditionally waived fees if it's for an extended period of time or date uncertain? I don't think we have.
Occasionally we have. We don't get this kind of a recommendation very often.
But, so do we continue it without prejudice? Yes?
I don't have my statutes, which I lost a long time ago, but my concern would be with a, I can't remember, I asked Mr. Callan all these years, the liberalized vesting provisions, if there's some way that they could consider staying in the pipeline. I think Mr. Rose's proposal is clear, because it makes them reapply, and they're going to reapply under the standards and existence at that time. So it will have gone through, presumably town meeting season, zoning changes, and given the status of that application, I think that's appropriate. I don't think there's any reason that application should be vested in any way, given only a quarter of an application as it was.
Barbara.
Mr. Rose, one of the things I've been meaning to contact you since Tuesday about that I never did was this, because when I looked at it, I will tell you, and this is, you know, a continuing theme from the seat, that this application was not complete, there were too many waivers, there were too many comments, and that, you know, it is my hope that people just get told, no, you're not even close to being ready to, to the planning board. So I do think, I'm glad that they've decided that coming forward right now isn't the right, and I like this much better than just continuing it as it was, because it was just way too murky with too many conditions and waivers.
Is the, the submitter of the request, is he an authorized individual in terms of a, because it's not from the property owners, from somebody called agent designer?
Yes, miss, he was listed as the agent or the applicant.
Okay.
For the project, so.
Good. Members of the board? I think we need a motion probably to...
Not accept.
Not accept the application at this time and waive the fees as you contend for the period of twelve months? Excuse me, go ahead.
Well, I say sure Barbara's concern, and frankly, I, I just deny acceptance, let them reapply and ask us that.
They can ask us to waive whatever. How much did they pay?
I don't recall. It was a standard site plan fee, I think you probably have it in your application.
I kept looking, I couldn't find it. Oh, it's right here.
Four hundred and forty-three.
I guess I'm a little irritated it took up staff time and our time to look at that thing. So I'm going to move that we find that the application is not complete and deny acceptance.
Motion on the floor, do we hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Jim and seconded by Barbara. Any comments on the motion? Phil?
Does that mean that they lose their rough fee?
They can come and request a waiver when they reapply.
Yes.
I want to see a lot better application kind of doing that.
Can ask for a waiver on the second application.
Which we can address at the time of application, which if it's in two months, I would think people would be very inclined to grant, but if it's in fourteen months, I would think people would be less inclined to grant.
Well, can I ask a question of Barbara?
Sure, certainly.
Was there any indication of how long of a time period that they would be ready?
They were wanting to do at least the residential portion very quickly, however, that doesn't address the site plan at all. So they, they were questioning whether or not they would be able to feasibly do the site plan, the commercial office part of it at all, and so it may not come back, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I just do have a concern about the loss of the fees. I mean, it's obvious that, Barbara, I understand, but, you know, they're trying...
Isn't that good? I don't even have to speak. It's like being with my husband, I just make a face, and I was making a joke.
I'm not responding to that.
Ladies and gentlemen, be easy on each other, please.
I guess, I guess I just have, I just have a concern that, you know, trying, trying to do the residential portion, that perhaps the plan is a little bit more than they anticipated, and, you know, not everybody can go out and hire, for to hire engineers and everything to tell them exactly what they need to do it. They, you know, they came in, I think they gave, they put their best foot forward, and I would just like to see the consideration of the fees to be waived.
Barbara?
I understand that, but when you have nine things listed, and the only comment is request waiver for all, and it's signed by your agent, you know, not yourself, I mean, this was, I understand that, you know, that is an issue, and I don't have any desire to take four hundred dollars from people, but Jim's right, it takes up staff time, it comes here. I think we address it at a future date if they come back.
Any further, yes?
I would agree that the issue of the fee can be taken up as a waiver request at some point in the future, and at that time we'll consider the timing and all other, you know, circumstances involved with the waiver request.
Any further comment on the motion? I'll move the motion, the voting party is Corey. No, we have everybody here this, Carl, excuse me, I wrote that down too, so I wouldn't forget that. I've got to put a name tag on one of these tags. Hey, you. We have six members and two alternates, so it's just the regular members voting at the moment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously in not accepting the application. Moving on to our first regularly scheduled piece of, of business, it would be, under all business, map five, lot one oh two and one oh three, a public meeting, hearing for a proposed amendment to allow the approved Viking Orchard Development to be built in phases. Thirty-four lot open space subdivision with one open space lot, Holocell LLC applicant where the hill road zoned, residential one and agricultural, and this was continued from August twelfth, two thousand and ten meeting, so the meeting is now open. Yes, Steve?
For the record, I'm recused from this matter because of firm involvement.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from the side of my agenda as well.
Okay, then. Carl, you are the voting alternate in this matter.
With your permission, may I remain dispossessed?
You both can remain seated, please.
I, I'm just going to voice that I think when people recuse, they need to remove themselves from the table, because it creates the impression from anybody from the public or looking that there's, they're a participant, and there have been times in the past where I think I've even looked to you for an answer to a question when you've been recused, so I'm just going to state that.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Gentlemen, we'll welcome you back in a few moments.
You stick around, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just so you, you know, I wasn't, it's six seventy-six, colon, twelve, Roman, almost six, it was a section I was searching for in the last discussion, so it does exist. You may like, it's the best thing out of applications.
Okay.
To complete that incomplete thought that I had thrown out there.
I'll have to read that.
You'll have to read it, I'm sure Eagle E. will tonight.
Which one was it, Jim?
Six seventy-six, twelve, Roman, oh, six, seventy.
I'll highlight it for quiz next meeting. Is there somebody representing the applicant wishing to speak in reference this?
Yes, the attorney's here.
Please come up and join us.
Did you have something you wanted to?
If you'd like me to start, I can.
Sure, I thought that was the protocol.
That sort of is. Mr. Chair, this request came to you several months ago, and we're finally now getting to it. It was continued at the last meeting, and since then, the staff has had some discussion with the applicant and made some clarifications and changes to their previous request. You have a letter in your correspondence packet, and that details out what the, what the request is. Basically, the biggest change was that they removed letter B from the, from the list, which addressed vesting on the project, that they had been requesting that the vesting would be complete after phase one, and that was, I think, a concern to the board at the last meeting, and so that was what had generated significant discussion, and in talking with the applicant afterwards, they had decided that that was okay with them to just remove that and go with the standard timeframe as was already listed on their, on their plans from a long time ago. So that was the biggest change, and then the other changes were that they just went through and clarified what portions would be in what phase a little bit better for you. So I'll actually just read, read what it says in their letter. It says, "Phase one shall include lots one oh three," and I did include a map here for your visual enjoyment. Phase one shall include lots one oh three through one oh, one oh three dash five inclusive, the proposed upgrades of the water booster station to be owned by the Goffstown Village Water Precinct, installation of drainage, municipal water and sewer, and individual services, reconstruction of Worthley Hill Road from Tyler Drive to Merrill Road, and the Southley Detention Pond along Worthley Hill Road. Phase two shall include lots one oh three dash six through one oh three dash twenty inclusive, the reconstruction of Worthley Hill Road from Merrill Road to Redtail Drive where it becomes a class six road, utility installations, the construction of Kestrel Drive, and the remaining detention ponds and access roads. The phase three shall include lots one oh three dash twenty-one through one oh three dash thirty-three inclusive, utility installations, and the construction of Redtail Drive. So, and as you can see on your exhibit, the roadway would be constructed all the way up to connect to the, this is, this is the first connecting street, Tyler Drive, I believe is the name, yeah, Tyler Drive, and that is, I'm sorry, that's Merrill. Yeah, Tyler's over here, Merrill is here. And so it would be constructed all the way up toward, past that intersection, giving access to these residents as well as, you know, an improved roadway for access off of Merrill there. Then the next phase would, would finish out the construction of the roadway as well as doing all these lots and the retention, and then the third phase would do this last cul-de-sac with the lots and whatever retention was left in there. I'm sorry, the detention is going to be done in phase two, but this little, if you can call it a detention pond. Okay, that's just slopes there, so there's no detention there. So that was the extent of the request. So the recommendation from staff is to approve the addition of phasing notes A, B, and C as detailed in the report, and I'll turn it back to the, to the Chair.
Would you like to address the board?
I can briefly summarize, miss. My name is Attorney Pansiaco, I'm here on behalf of Holocell, the applicant. Last time we were before the board in August, we had three requests. One was a ninety-day extension, second one was to request that the Glenview Homeowners Association be released from its obligations associated with the water booster station, assuming that the Goffstown Water Precinct assumes ownership and control of that equipment. And the third was to request the phasing of the project. Also included, as Brian mentioned, was a request that the completion of phase one, which was slightly different under the prior note, constitute active and substantial completion, which has since been removed. At that time, the board granted the first two requests and continued the third request to this hearing due to the late hour. At that meeting, certain board members did express some concerns about the phasing, and the concerns were raised in relation to a project that I knew nothing about, but now know a little more about, and I'm sure I'll learn more about it, called Samos Park. And I guess Samos Park was reconfigured into Mountain Laurel Estates a few years after it was approved. I have the plan here for anybody that cares to take a look, and I also have a reduced copy of the plan that's up there, which I'm not sure the board will need now that we have the overhead, but if anybody wants it, I have it here. The Mountain Laurel Estates, formerly Samos Park, had common leach fields, it had a community water system, it had private roads when it was originally approved in the late eighties to the early nineties. And I don't know in particular what went wrong with that, but there was proposed with the approval of forty-six lots, a phasing schedule, if you will, whereby a certain number of permits would be issued with each phase, called into question at a later date before it was reconfigured into the current plan, and I guess there was a re-subdivision of the remaining lots. There, there was a question raised about the permits that would be issued within each phase and whether that was growth control. Now, whether that caused any kind of a problem, I don't know, but in the context of this application, I believe that what came up last week, last time we met, was concerns about an association, ownership of common land, what would happen if some lots were sold and other lots were not, and, in other words, what problems could go wrong with the phasing. The phasing is simply meant to break it up into smaller bites, if you will, and allow for lower performance security amounts to be used, which are more likely gotten in today's economic climate. There aren't no common leach fields or community wells associated with this project, or private roads for which fees are charged in this project. Well, this project was reconfigured with public roads when it was reapproved in ninety-six, but nonetheless, there's no assessments or common improvements that would be shared by a fewer number of homeowners if the project were not completed, because this project before you has public sewer, public water, and public roads. So it's for whatever it's worth, that's the insight that I can bring to the table as to that concern in relation to what happened with Samos Park, and if there's other things that went wrong that I don't know about, perhaps you can share them with me. Other than that, we are requesting that the board allow us to phase it for the reason previously stated, allow it to be built in smaller bites, and built out more slowly over a very difficult time, and not put anybody at risk by trying to do too much in too short of an amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board, do we have any questions? Yes, Jim?
When we approved this initially with the conditions, what did we establish as the measure of active and substantial development?
I don't know any project that you would establish that at the time of approval.
Well, we do. We say it's going to constitute, so they, you define it under vesting, and we always have that as a condition of what's, what it's going to be, right? Since that was raised as an issue, taken off, we've already given that away by defining it in the approval as commencement of construction, for example. We need to go back and visit that to see if it's done on a per-phase basis now, but still applies to the whole project. I have, I don't see, I'd like to see the wording in our initial approval.
The only wording I remember seeing in everything were all the conditions, and there were no vesting.
Well, we define it, active and substantial development will consist of X, you know, so it is.
It is defined on the actual plan. I, I can run upstairs and grab it if, if the board wishes.
I believe it's defined in the regulations.
No, yeah, well, in our regs or in our approval, we can define it in our approval, I just want to see what we did, because you, you sent, the applicant has agreed that, as I understand, that will be done on a phase-by-phase basis, but we've, we've already granted for the entire project, we need to go back and amend that.
I, I believe, and this is by memory, that it included, all of the utilities had to be installed, and I know that all the utilities are technically installed by the phase two, per that note, or?
Phase two, of course, that's when the road and everything is done.
Let me just finish that, and asking that question, I really don't care what the answer is, I just want to make sure we've dealt with the issue.
Actually, they, they do have some utility installations for the phase three portion of it inside the roadway of phase three.
I believe there's a note on the plan, Brian, that I can see right here. Note sixteen, active and substantial development or building under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine one, relative to the four-year exemption, to regulation changes and substantial completion of the improvements as shown on the subdivision plan or site plan under RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine two, relative to final vesting, to be completion of all required utility extensions in and all improvements to Worthley Hill Road.
That's on that. So, I would assume that's Phase Two under this, because the utility you're talking about in Phase Three, I'm assuming is associated with the construction of the actual road and houses.
Yes, so I would say you're probably right. Hard to read, it's very small.
Can I keep this?
Yes.
The phasing is clearly outlined in A, B, and C. What's not there is the time element. What is your proposed time element to complete all three phases?
You're asking me? I wasn't sure you didn't look at me.
Trust the chair, but.
We, we hope to start with Phase One. And given the current state of affairs in the real estate market, I can't make a promise as to how long it will take to sell Phase One. And I am inclined to think that my client isn't going to be looking to build Phase Two until Phase One is sold. But that's speculation also. I would be disingenuous to make any representation, in fact, as to the timing.
Barbara, yes.
If I, and this is probably to Brian and the applicant. If I look at the Phase One, five lots that are being developed, and I look at the open space behind it, because that was part of the open space that was considered in the calculation for the development. How much area am I talking about?
I don't know.
Is it fair to say it's less than ten acres? Or do you have any idea?
Probably in that range, about ten, ten acres.
Because the full lot is seventy-five acres, I believe, or somewheres in that vicinity.
Yes.
So, just think of it as a proportion of what you see. It probably represents about maybe ten percent, so it's probably less.
It's probably less, because that is a pie-shaped piece of property. That's why I'm curious as to how much area we're talking about.
But once they start, all the open space is dedicated to that particular property.
That's correct.
Well, that brings us to the issue of who is holding and managing this property, because right now, it's obviously held by Holocell, which is going to be a different developer, which is going to be a different, so I think that was one of the concerns that was raised in conjunction with the last meeting was to what's happening to title and management of the balance of the property. Well, anything is done.
Each lot, when purchased, comes with an undivided one thirty-fourth interest in the open space. And that's how it's also assessed. So, you get a tax bill that has the lot plus the one thirty-fourth in the open space. It's undivided and cannot be subdivided. So, um, for instance, if the first six lots were to sell, you'd have six homeowners, each with a one thirty-fourth, and Holocell would own the remaining lots in the remainder undivided interest in the open space. I, I'm not sure that answers your question.
Well, it, it sort of goes, and I'm not phrasing this very well, to my concern with the phasing. It's, you've created a few lots with a percentage interest in a larger entity that's not created. And to the extent that you phase it, and I know legally what you're saying is there is a creation of something holding the rest of it, but you have a one thirty-fourth interest of open space that in the Samos Park example had an interest in an organization that ceased to exist. And so by phasing this, and I'm not sure is it practical reality, you end up with any different outcome? The concern is, five houses get developed, you have five homeowners. Who's managing the rest of that property?
Well, and I guess my question is too, on the management. Really, the only common improvement out there is the walking trails. There's not a whole lot to manage as far as the open space.
But I guess my point is that one of the, one of the reasons projects are not phased, for example, is because their surety put up for the cost of the entire project. So, should the town end up with residents owning five lots or ten lots, and the rest of the development is not developed, it gives the town some options in connection with the completion of the development or, um, security for the ownership rights. And we're not out to protect private property, and I understand that. People buy things and it's subject to whatever the conditions are. But, and I understand it's a risk in all projects. I mean, essentially, you're talking about completion, a project starting and a project completing. And the question is, I mean, I understand the bonding issue, but I guess I don't see any other reason for phasing this. And I see a lot of potential issues by not having security for the entire project. Because it's not individual lots. You've created open space, you've created a associa- association, there are documents we have. And in Phase One, you haven't even gotten close to that point where the developer gets to say, enough lots have been sold, I'm no longer in it. And, and you've transferred management. I mean, and, and I have some issues as to how much area Phase One actually encompasses, because I think you've got some houses on very small lots in ag zoning. And I don't, I don't think there's ten acres there or, but, I mean, I know you're going to give the utility to get the frontage to match the water and sewer, so. But that's my concern with the phasing is. And there were a lot of issues with Samos Park. It did ultimately get resolved, but only, only after there were at least two other proposals for a water system to go in there. And I understand you don't have that common utility issue, but it was still an issue of owners being left with an uncompleted development and there being no surety or funds available to complete it.
I guess, in thinking about that, the purpose of the surety here would be to build road frontage for the remaining lots and provide utilities for Phase Two and Phase Three. So, in other words, Phase One were to be built and be the only section that was built, I'm not sure I see any harm there, simply if Phase Two and Phase Three were not built. Simply because, well, first of all, most towns aren't excited about adding new lots. And one of the benefits of phasing is to lower slower absorption. And towns are usually very concerned about a huge influx of new residents. So, that's another piece of that, not necessarily something that's important to us. But in all honesty, if the performance bond isn't in place to bring up the water and sewer and build a new road, a new cul-de-sac with more lots, I'm not sure what disadvantage the owners in Phase One are at, because they have their undivided interest in the common land. They have their water and sewer, they have their individual lot. And perhaps there may be a point in time where we would say Phase Two and Phase Three no longer exist, and maybe the undivided interest held by each Phase One lot owner becomes larger if the parcel's not developed. I, I'm not sure there would be any risk or downside there for the town. And that's what the performance bond is intended to protect, is the town.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know.
Jim? Looking at it more from the, I guess, from Public Works view, the Phase Two will be the Merrill, the Worthley Hill Road reconstruction from Merrill Road to Redtail Drive, as soon as the last of the, of the road, I can't remember the, I'm through. But when we approved this, was there some representation made on which we relied for approval of any part of the project for the reconstruction of the upper portion of Worthley Hill Road? In particular, we've encountered in a prior unfortunate episode of logging the drainage issues up on the upper Worthley Hill Road, if I require, if I recall. By allowing that to be in Phase Two, we face the possibility that will never be done for the reasons you just said. How much would that influence our concerns about if, if, what, what would be our concern if that happened, where only Phase One is essentially bonded and we're only assured of the construction of Phase One? How's that for a backwards interview question?
I was with you for a little while, but I keep.
I'll then turn it over to Megan to make sense of it.
Yeah.
Um, I can, I'll try and answer your question, Jim. So, the, the bond, if you have a bond on Phase One, we'll get the reconstruction up to Merrill Road. And we'll, the town, if you remember, there were some detention ponds related to the development. And then there were some other detention ponds related to improving the existing drainage system.
Right.
Because we have severe water problems and we have no storage, not enough storage capacity. So, there's two ponds related to the town's drainage, and one pond related to the development. In Phase One, the large pond that will be built is more for the town's purposes. In Phase Two, there's a large pond out toward the back, near the cul-de-sac end. That's for the development purpose, and a smaller one up front. That was just another one to help for the town's drainage system. So, if you, if, the reason they, we got into the issue of reconstructing the road was, one, you need to bring up water and sewer, so you've got a trench patch for water, trench patch for sewer, trench patches for services. The road is totally junked, it's a failed road. So, to patch it back together, you know, would be very difficult. Plus, you've got all the construction traffic going up there for, you know, to build the site. So, we just, I'll just, there's, there's no way you can just repair that. You really got to just grind it up and rebuild it. So, I think with Phase One, you know, there'll be an improvement to the town road, new drains in that section, you know. So, there is, I think the town will benefit from that. Obviously, it'd be great to have it all, but I do understand the trying to bond it in smaller pieces. When I did the bond calculation, you know, you're looking at just rough numbers, like a three million dollar bond, the whole thing. Where if you break it up, it's more like million-dollar chunks or small. So, it makes it more reasonable for that. I guess the only thing I can think, just trying to play devil's advocate, the only risk I could think that you would have, but if, I guess if it, if Phase Two and Three never got built, this wouldn't happen. But say Phase One got built, you upgrade the road, you binder it. One question I would have is, how quickly is Phase Two coming? Because usually, you want to top it right after, like the next year. So, that, that would be one question, you know. Do we top it a year later? Or if we think this, this next, um, Phase Two is going to happen soon, we might wait one more year. I would never really want to extend that more than two years before top coating, it's just not a good idea. It's not, it's not an awful thing to base it and top it, then have construction traffic on it. I mean, it'll be a good new road, it'll be able to handle it. But I guess, you know, you could look at that, you, you build Phase One, you got a new road, now you've got construction traffic on that new piece of road. But if it wasn't a new piece of road, say it was just an existing road that was in used shape, you're still going to have the traffic over it. So, I, I don't think that's a, a reason not to phase it. I don't know, is that getting anywhere, answering your question, or am I making it, that was confusing also?
Contagious.
There's an observation, if you have a bond for Phase One, and you have to come back to the board for release of the bond, correct?
Yes.
So, at that time, we have some assurance. At that time, they better have a better feel for what's going on in Phase Two. And we could take and move that bond over to Phase Two without relinquishing the bond, I believe. Yes?
Well, if they walk, let me try to simplify my question. If they walk away on a project after Phase One, are we in a better or worse position? Are we missing some integral improvement that was fundamental to our approval even of Phase One? Because it wouldn't be bonded.
I don't know. Megan?
I say we're in a better position because we gained one large detention pond to help us. One of the drainage concerns way up at the top of the road has already been addressed, actually. So, I know that was a concern earlier, but that's been addressed and it, it is functioning well now. It's not causing us any new problems. I mean, we all know that road's in bad shape and our existing drainage system isn't great up there. But I can only think we're in a better position because we'll have at least one new section of road, new drainage, a new detention pond. I don't see how that's any worse for the town anyway.
But, but I do think that when they come back for release of their bond, we have an opportunity to review the project's timing and possibly how soon they might be moving it forward. And as far as I'm concerned, we're still holding the bond, and we could take and posture a little bit, I don't know. Tim?
If we were to approve the phasing, what happens to the process for requesting extensions? Does this project then, is it void of a, extension request for the future?
No. They, they have a, they have a, I'll let you speak, go ahead.
No, you're, you're doing fine.
No, I'm not doing fine. I got both feet in the mud over here, so.
Well, that, I think that goes to the, the four-year exemption issue, which I was addressing. Because these continuances that we've been granting are to meet the conditions precedent before the approval becomes final. Once it becomes final, it's final. It's just subject to zoning or regulation changes unless it becomes in this kind of protected vesting stat- status, which is my concern and the, um, the applicant's concern about what active and substantial development has to be done or substantial completion has to be reached to create that vest. But in terms of our, our taking any further action, I don't think there is anything that has to be enforced. We, we don't typically set a time when one, an application, project has to be built out.
So theoretically, it could be out there for the next twenty-five years.
Should we change our zoning?
And not get built.
No.
I personally don't think so, but.
Well, I, I'm talking about the legal side of it.
No, not in, not in.
Our approvals have our.
Not in its present form, certainly not.
No, but I think Tim's point is, could Phase One be built and Phase Two and Three be out there for twenty-five years?
If we, if we accepted the phasing, I said, was a first statement, I mean.
Because arguably, if you've started ground on Phase One, you've met all the conditions precedent. You've begun your construction, and I think Tim's question is, does Phase Two and Phase Three then essentially permanently vest?
That's exactly what I was asking.
But if we defined active and substantial development, which is the four-year vesting and then act, uh, substantial completion as completing, somebody with young eyes has to read this, improvements as shown on the subdivision site plan relating to final vesting, this is already to the completion of required utility extensions and all improvements to Worthley Hill Road. We've gotten all the improvements out of it that we're going to want, and then we don't care.
Right.
So, what I'm, what I'm getting to is if, if Phase One was to, to be built, I would like to see the, the extension to the top of the hill be done and all the public improvements completed as part of Phase One. So that if Phase Two and Phase Three go away someday and never come back, the promise that this project was, was approved upon was that they were going to rebuild Worthley Hill Road gets done before it ever goes away.
But would that constitute active and substantial completion at that point?
No, the question is, are you better off actually, are all parties better off with Phase One being completely independent? And then when Phase Two goes forward, then you got your substantial completion.
I think we are, I think we're better, the way it's worded now, because if they don't complete all that, as Tim suggested, we could change our zoning, and they're at risk on Phases Two and Three. Because we've defined it to be all the improvements to Worthley Hill Road. So, they complete Phase One, they doodle around for the next ten years. We, we do our zoning, they haven't completed Worthley Hill Road. They haven't met the statutory standards, and they're subject to the zoning change. And I think they understand that risk, but that's the lever we have. And that's how we treat all developments. They, they're at risk if they hang out there. Now, if there's some special consideration for erosion control, it's something we put time limits, but typically we don't. I'm not sure there's any reason here. Unless, as you say, there was a quid pro quo.
I think I, I think I'd like to hear from the general public, depending on who's. Yes, you may.
I have a, I have a question for Megan, and this has to do with sort of vesting. I mean, this project was approved with conditions two years ago. So, the detention ponds that were designed and approved are now two years old, over two years. Are you aware of any changes in state regulations that would affect our approval of these ponds, of these detention ponds?
There are new AOT rules now.
And they would have.
This is starting from, like, those are pretty brand-new, so, those AOT rules. So, if this started from scratch, yes, there are new rules that require infiltration. And I'm sure, I'm not summarizing it very well at all, but the biggest change to me that I'm aware of is that it's, there's, you have to require infiltration now. And if there's like a calculation, you know, to figure that out with these, or just your basic detention ponds. They're not really infiltrating time, they're newer methods. So, that change, if this was coming now, here on end, it.
This would be, that would be done, okay. All right, that's it for now.
Okay, ma'am.
I just have one question. I want to make sure I understand what Member Raymond was suggesting, and if I'm incorrect. I just have one question, I wanna make sure I understand what member Raymond was suggesting, and if I'm incorrect, please tell me. That note, from what I'm reading tonight, is that provided we complete all the improvements promised for Worthley Hill Road, we will then have met the standard for active and substantial, is?
That's what they're, that's what it says now.
Yes, it does, but I just wanna make sure that this is what we've been talking about, just to be clear.
I haven't suggested.
So, okay, so if we were to complete phase one, as it's shown there, and then just complete what is proposed for Worthley Hill Road, for whatever reason there may be at that time, and not necessarily complete the new road in phase two right away, and we pave within two years, as Megan suggests, we will have still met the standard?
That's whatever the current standard is.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I had that.
Required utility extent, yeah. In, and all improvements.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I was.
That's the utility extension in Worthley Hill Road and improvements, that's, that's what we approved. And I'm not, I wouldn't soften that.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in reference to the phasing of this project? Only the phasing. Lynn, please introduce yourself, if I may.
If I could address before, I have a few points, but one question.
And you are?
Leonard Stewart, Worthley Hill Road, direct and butler to the project. Somewhat like Groundhog Day, because they keep coming back here on the same thing. I have one question which I've been unable to get from the discussion as to whether the phase one of the project, the improvements in Worthley Hill Road, and I believe part of this project was extension of water and sewer all the way to the end of the pavement there. It would only be extended in phase one to the corner of Worthley and Merrill, and then utilities would be run for the other two roads as part of phases two and phases three. I just haven't been able to, to gather that clearly from the discussion here tonight.
I would assume that the utilities are extended to Merrill Road under phase one.
So that then, as phases two and three are built out, there will be additional construction, construction traffic, and roadwork for those two phases.
Yes.
Okay, I, I think I have the answer. I just find the discussion of phasing here, I believe is premature. I believe the issue that was raised by Mr. Raymond about conditions precedent, one of the things that was talked about was providing public water to this site. A year ago, I believe it was, pardon me, it was the October meeting, eleven and a half months ago, I was here talking about this same issue of completion of the water agreement. As of today, I spoke with the Gulfstown Water, Village Water Precinct, I spoke with the past president of the Glenview Homeowners Association, and the current president of the group. And despite the applicant's representations to the contrary about dotting i's and crossing t's, there is no agreement. It's essentially a deadlocked situation where they need a unanimous sign-off, and they have a homeowner who will not sign off on the project. I think to discuss all of this with an extension running until November twelfth is very premature because that's a primary condition of the subdivision approval, I believe. And someone can correct me on the technicalities, that both the density and the yield plan were based on the presumption this would be an area erred by water and sewer. And they have yet to come up with, and I mean, we're talking, we're talking about water back in two thousand eight. We've been talking about a water agreement for a year. There is still none, they keep coming back, sixty days more, ninety days more. You know, at what point is this board going to draw the line and say, come up with a plan that works? Because, you know, either they've gotta do something with Glenview, or do they build another pumping station on their own property on the other side of the road? I think it's premature. I think the phasing, they get the benefits of an open space plan, but you're basically creating six non-conforming lots in an R-one zone with nothing other than a promise, yeah, maybe we'll build the rest of it someday. You know, I don't see that's to the advantage of the town.
We're talking about phasing tonight.
Well, I thought that's what I was talking about, phasing. You know, you're talking phase one, you're talking six non-conforming lots in an R-one zone. I would be a bit worried, I think that the point was hit on here as far as the phasing, the bonding in phases, that if you don't have any bond that would assure the completion of the utility lines to the top of the road. Again, I believe that was one of the original conditions of approval, was extension of public water and, or to the end of the pavement where the Class Six road starts there. I think for all of these reasons, I, I, I think you're changing the rules in midstream. I don't think it's a good idea. I would, I think that the board should wait until the current extension runs out and discuss phasing after it's been proved that the applicant can indeed provide the utilities as promised to the subdivision. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak, reference the application for a phasing of the Worthley Hill Road project? Seeing now members of the board, any other further questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Is it, is there still no three-party agreement? I mean, I'm just, I, I mean.
There is a three-party agreement. Um, the, it's formal of substance at this point. We're talking about two, two-party agreements versus one three-party agreement. And in addition to that, the applicant also has Plan B out there as an option to pursue in the event there was no agreement. But we have word tonight from both counsel for Glenview, as well as one of the offices of the association, that it's just a matter of formal of substance, we have an agreement.
Well, that's, in all fairness, that is what you said the last time with an email from attorney Cronin.
I have, I have no control over this.
So, but in any case, the, the tri-party agreement needs to be done before this starts?
Yes.
Okay.
We understand that, and we'll submit a signed copy of one agreement or two agreements to Brian, whatever it may be. It'll be between the precinct and the developer and Glenview and the precinct. Or one agreement signed by all three parties. And I'm not sure why, but, but it'll all be there.
Phil?
After all, questions are all answered.
Do you have an additional question, Barbara?
Um, you mentioned Plan B. Um, I just have a question, because if there's no tri-party or agreement with Glenview and that pumping station, to upgrade that pumping station to provide the water, then I assume the Plan B that you mentioned is another plan to bring the water up here?
We have an option to put an independent pump station in another location on the property.
Which property?
I believe it's right on the end of this property on one of the lots.
Phase one?
Yes. And it will be constructed as part of the phase one improvements. But that's a very remote possibility, it's something we've always kept out there as an option in the event that we were not able to reach agreement with Glenview, which we've been told we had.
Just a follow-up on that, I guess, I don't recall, um, because I've been, this project has been in front of the board for a while, I've been on and off as a selectman's rep.
Mm-hmm.
And the properties and the lots that are approved in phase one, uh, am, am I hearing that Plan B's pumping station has no effect on those existing lots?
I'm not sure the exact location in the pumping station is so very small. I suspect it'll be small, if any. But we haven't gone into the engineering detail because it's always been ninety-nine percent, um, probable that we would have the tri-party, because the precinct would prefer only one pumping station.
I, I understand that, but I guess what I'm hearing, okay? Or I'm only hearing a, a part of, that there's a possibility that if the tri-party agreement does not go through and Plan B has to be implemented, then there could be engineering that comes in front of this board because now we have to make modifications to the approval of the lots in phase one because there could be engineering for that pumping station that's gonna affect those lots.
I don't know that that's the case.
But it's possible.
It, well, any, yes, I suppose it is possible.
Possibility that this, if this gets approved in phases and we have to go to Plan B, that this board may wind up with a completely different engineering plan for the phase one.
No, that's not the case. It would be a matter of the pump station not being in the Tyler Drive subdivision. It would just be placed right there in the beginning of phase one, is my understanding.
Phil, do you understand the first lot on Worthley Hill on the left-hand side is about eighty-five feet up from the start of their property? And that's probably generally the location of where that pump station would be at the base of the project.
Right.
It won't be on somebody's property. And I don't, and I don't think.
It's very remote.
Remote, very remote. Barbara?
I, I, everybody's sort of discussing this like they've heard about it. I, 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 I'm, I'm sort of looking at the motion, wondering why we made a motion sort of going from a tri-party to a two-party, or, I mean, I'm, if we have to, if there's a Plan B, you have to come back.
Oh, we know that.
Yeah, I don't know why we're going back to.
All right, okay, I mean.
It's very minor.
Well, all right.
Yes.
They understand they'd have to come back?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I.
Not before, certain factor.
Okay, I just. I mean, pumping stations and noise generated a lot of activity on this application. It wasn't just a little minor engineering thing.
And I think they're a risk if they come back, we don't want it.
Right, we understand that.
Any other members of the board wish to make a comment, ask a question? Tim?
So, attorney Pansiakio, are you considering, um, amending your phasing request to include the, the length of Worthley Hill, as you were just asking attorney Raymond about?
I asked a question to make sure I understood, I'm not changing anything, no.
I just wanted to make sure.
This was agreed to before tonight.
Now, hearing no further comments, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Members of the board, excuse me?
We can deliberate later?
Um, you think this is a long deliberation, or is this a, a, a short?
For other people waiting.
It's fine, we understand. Members of the board, do we want to deliberate now, or do we wish to postpone until we end the meeting? Things are fresh in our mind right now.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you.
To approve the phasing request, but with the condition, there's been no request to change the vesting provision on Lo, note, uh, note, what could be note sixteen, if I could read it clearly. I'll give it to my assistant to confirm.
That's correct.
And understanding that the conditions precedent still have to be met, subject to the previous nth ninety-day extension.
Correct. What does that mean?
Well, I mean, it's not like everything's been done to start, there's still a couple of conditions that need to be done.
I hear a second to Jim's motion. Motion on the floor. Carl, you are.
So that wording will be within the motion, I'll second.
Seconded by Carl, any discussion on the motion? Six voting members?
I mean, I'm gonna vote for this only 'cause I understand the, the concept of phasing, but I don't even think this should be before the board. The continuances should have been denied a few requests ago. But I'm gonna vote for it.
In the discussions, hearing no further comments, move the motion. All those in favor of approving the phasing as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes positive, yes, motion carries. Phil and Tim voted in the aye side. Moving on to our next item on our agenda. Second item in our all businesses, map nine, lot thirty-three dash seven, forty-six and sixty. Subdivision review hearing for proposed seventeen-lot open space subdivision revised from nineteen lots. Blackbrier Woods LLC and William and Elizabeth Cordis owners. Montalona Road and Blackbrook Road zoned agricultural and continued from July twenty-second, two thousand and ten. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, the Blackbrier Woods, as you stated, uh, project. It's located between Montalona Road and Blackbrook Road, just west of Serenitas Lane and also Tyrrell Hill. The project is to subdivide approximately one hundred and forty-one point five-five acres into seventeen residential lots, a very large open space lot. The remainder, uh, of that, of, all that open space will remain undeveloped as part of this open space development plan and would not be further subdivided. On July twenty-second, the town approved the yield plan for the seventeen lots. They dropped it down from nineteen lots because of some additional wetlands that had been found on the property. Since then, the applicant has had some discussion regarding the actual subdivision plan, but, uh, the discussion was continued due to receiving the plans late before the hearing. And so, um, the applicant's again here tonight to have this additional discussion on the, on the subdivision plan. This is the approximate layout of the plan and open space lots. The two large lots that you'll, that you see that are left over are open space. And then there's a small one against the river that you can't really see, but that's the third lot. And then this is a closer-up shot of the, the subdivided lots where they are planning currently to, to, uh, show all seventeen lots. Some key considerations, the property has numerous wetlands on it. That's, uh, I think an obvious thing that we've already seen. Planning board has approved the yield plan for seventeen lots. The new road to be built is a cul-de-sac. One note to, um, to make on that is that it's, I believe, a, a longer cul-de-sac than what would typically be allowed in the town. Fire department would have to sign off, and we have not yet received a fire department comment or sign off on that. So, um, that's one thing to just consider. Drainage designs are proving to be a challenge, and, um, I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about that from the applicant, so I'm not gonna go into too much, but, um, that's due to the numerous wetlands on the, on the property and trying to avoid impacting the wetland buffers. And as Megan actually just stated, there's some new national regulations. And, um, I'm gonna allow Mr. Mitchell to address some of the things they've been discussing regarding drainage and the solutions there. The town has not been able to come to a, a, I guess, a good solution with the applicant at this time. So what the recommendation really is gonna be is to, um, hear what they have to say, and then continue the application for another month and allow for some additional time to address staff's concerns regarding drainage and, um, infiltr- the new infiltration rules that they're, um, trying to implement on this plan. So, um, with that, I'll turn it back to the chair and, um, allow for a presentation from Mr. Mitchell.
Is there an individual representing the applicant to present?
Eric? Yes, my name's Eric Mitchell, I'm here to present this plan on behalf of Blackbrier Woods. The plan that I have up here is a colored-up rendering of the layout that we have. It does differ a little bit from what was submitted, and I'd like to give you a brief synopsis. I also have extra copies for you, if you'd like to look at those as well. I have some for, uh, those who can see. I have some for those who can see, and I have some for the bigger ones for those who maybe can't see the other ones too.
Do I take that personally?
You did say you're having trouble reading something, so do you want one of the big ones?
No, I'll try the little.
Okay. Uh, alright, I will do that. No, I'll just send them right, just like that.
This is for-
Thank you, Eric.
Cause it's one, it's a set. I think, I don't think he knows that. I think he counted to send them down.
But, oh, excuse me.
No.
I didn't count them.
No, I think-
I'm sorry. There are some more over there that need to come around this way, Brian. I shortchanged the folks on the side of the table. Not intentional.
Okay, so that goes with that.
Thank you, sir.
And I still have larger ones like this one, if anyone wants to see.
Yeah, everybody can have a second page.
Two small plans we set. One is color-up, the other one is a landscaping plan. I'd like to talk to the color-up first to give you an update of what we've done since the last time we met with the planning board. We have met with the Conservation Commission, I believe, on two occasions. The concerns that we are having relative to stormwater management, did not affect the town regulations. So as we did meet and we had submitted the plans, but as Brian has indicated, there are new alteration terrain rules at the state. They have been in effect since the beginning of two thousand and nine, but the, a lot of projects have not been ongoing. So it's a, given it's a site-by-site basis, that you have to try to take care of your stormwater, and infiltration is a key to, to a lot of that, part of the change. What we have always had, we've had an infiltration basin near the beginning of the road, about three hundred, four hundred feet in. And the problem that we have been having is taking care of the water that is down towards the end of the cul-de-sac. The plans that we had shown, the Conservation Commission, I think the last plans you saw, showed in the area in the southern part, it says temporary stockpile right here. We had a proposed detention pond there. There was some concern in that the house was out back, some concerns that the pond was still yet remote from where the road was. We then did change the plan, brought the pond up, beginning up in the vicinity of Lot Number Twelve, in through here, and put the house further back. But what that did, given the slopes, the house, the road is up high, but then it slopes down low. In order for us to get the, the volume that we needed for detention, we had a very deep pond and slopes going down, three-to-one slopes from the end of the road going down to the bottom, were quite excessive. In talking to the Conservation Commission, they voiced their concerns about, although it was up near the road and accessible, they had concerns that it was not a good design, whereas it went straight from the road down to the bottom. They asked about fencing, they asked about landscaping to screen it. All of those items we did take to, under consideration. And what we have come up with, the design that you have seen, that they have not seen yet, is a detention pond to the rear off of the cul-de-sac. We have met with Public Works a couple times. And at our last meeting last week, we talked about having remote ponds that need maintenance. And at the meeting that we had with them, and the last one with the Conservation Commission, we had a swale that was proposed at the bottom of the lots on the west side of the project, which would be up against a hundred-foot buffer. That would give a physical deterrent to people from going the other way, but maintenance was always a concern. There wasn't a lot of water being captured, but we had to try to get the water from this area down over to here so we could detain it. What we've come up with since we met with Public Works last Thursday is that we have eliminated any collection of water in behind the lots on the westly side of the road. All our drainage on this end of the project is going into the detention pond that is out to the rear. We had taken the house that was further out and moved it up near the road. So I think that based on our design, things have finally come together. We had concerns over, from commission, from Public Works, and from the planning board about the placement of the ponds, where the houses were in respect to those. So I think that what we've come up here now is a, is a good plan, trying to take everybody's concerns together. At the last meeting, we talked about grading on the sites. These plans are graded out with the houses. These are all three-bedroom houses. The actual grading may, may be subject to change, but we're doing this to show that we're able to get the septic designs, the driveways, all put onto the lots without interfering with the, the buffers that we have, with just a couple of exceptions. We have asked, we have asked the environmental consultant to do a function values analysis, which is being, which is being done. We have a area behind Lot Number Four, which is the top of the hill, which we'd like to go into the outer hundred-foot buffer, about twenty-five feet. And we are preparing the function values analysis for that. Also, we have some grading for the access road going out to the detention pond, which is in the outer fifty feet. The yellow line you see here is the fifty-foot setback. And that is being prepared to be submitted to the Conservation Commission so it can come back to here. In our discussion last week with Public Works, we have some catch basins here, which have sumps in them, and they would go into what is shown on the plans that you have originally submitted, a for-bay area here in the front of the detention pond. What Public Works had decided that they much rather have a deeper sump, because they have equipment to suck those sumps out, as opposed to have to go physically do any cleanup in a for-bay area. So with that, we have changed our catch basins to four-foot sumps, which means we don't have to have the for-bay. And that was something that Public Works had suggested and were able to do. The one thing that had come up is, and it's in Brian's memo to the board, has to deal with who maintains the detention structures. In the street, catch basins and that, the town does maintain. You have a truck to do that. The roads are obviously a public street. They get plowed and maintained by Public Works. Public Works does have a concern over the long-term maintenance of detention ponds, because these aren't only just detention ponds as they once were. Some of these are infiltration ponds. The water's meant to percolate down through the soil. And they do need maintenance and maintenance based on the schedule. Public Works is concerned whether they really have the personnel to do that. And there's several, I think there's over sixty, and Megan can comment, ponds in, in town already that may, may or may not be maintained as they should. If this was a townhouse development, higher-density type development, we would probably have a homeowners association. And then that would be one way to privately take care of drainage. If this was a private road, we would have to have a homeowners association to take care of that as well. But we strongly prefer not to have a homeowners association, mainly because these are individual lots, although they're close together. Everybody would have a independent area to live in, and they would not have to have an association to be formed just for the maintenance of the ponds. But that in itself doesn't help the town out. Perhaps in the future, they may be impact fees for stormwater maintenance that has to be put on. But right now, the town does not have a structure. Some communities, as I understand through Public Works, like Manchester, may be putting a, becoming an actual stormwater utility, just like they have Manchester Waterworks and the Sioux Department. I think they're actually trying to get approved, if I understand it correctly, through PUC, to be a utility company, so that they would charge everybody in town for maintenance of stormwater all over town, which the EPA through the, their initiatives, there's a lot more stormwater being done that has nothing to do with new development, stormwater management. That has nothing to do with development. Other places may charge a one-time fee, but this is all new. The AOT rules, as I said, which became effective beginning of two thousand and nine, have not been implemented greatly, mainly because of the economy. And what comes with new facilities also requires maintenance. How that gets maintained has not been, there's not a lot of experience here on how to do that. I think I've covered most of what we had had talked about. Whether, I don't know if it was the Conservation Commission or the planning board had asked about landscaping. This is a rough layout. We do plan to have tree trees, which will be planted. There'll be some additional fencing, like picket fencing put on these houses. The ones that you see that are L-shaped would have a gable end facing the road and a single-car garage coming to the side, which is a more traditional village-type house. The other houses that are rectangular are garage unders. And all the houses, as I said before, would be three-bedroom houses. We are planning to submit our plans next week to Alteration Terrain, as well as the Wetlands Bureau for a crossing here, and also to the state for subdivision approval. Because I think we've got things worked out with our drainage to the, to the end here. The pond itself is only going to be about three feet deep, if it was full, which is different than where it was placed over through here. We think we're ready to submit our drainage and our reports both to Public Works for their review, as well as to the state agencies. So if there's any other comments that we need from the board, we'd like to take that now. I realize we don't have a real technical session tonight, because we're still waiting for the functions and values analysis, as well as feedback from the Public Works again. We've also talked to the fire department. They are requesting that there be a sister in place, but they have not viewed the plans or looked at the location to be able to come up with a, an actual location without where they would prefer. So we are proceeding ahead, but I think the design itself has pretty much now been finalized as far as layout for the road and what we're doing with the stormwater.
Members of the board, do we have any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Yes, Jim?
Well, maybe it's more for Megan, but Mr. Mitchell rattled off a bunch of possible long-term solutions to the stormwater management issue, which I think we've become more attentive to. But I didn't hear anything that really is offering for this project. There's a lot of the things that have to be implemented on a zoning basis or going-forward basis. So I guess turning it to Megan is there been something discussed that she's going to recommend to us? That we want to consider? Or that is still in the works, or is she looking to us to come up with it?
Megan?
Um, I think the consensus from EPW is that this is more of a long-term issue, where we need to come up with kind of a town-wide plan of how we're gonna handle this in the future. It's not so much that we need to come up with an answer for this subdivision. It just, each time you come forward, it, it makes us more aware that we have more and more of these ponds and the new type of infiltration design and, and options that engineers have to choose from are more, require more maintenance than our current systems. And as you said, you know, we've been working on, coming up with a list of what we have for treatment swales and ponds in town. We have about sixty-eight of them total. You know, many of them are, are not being properly maintained, and that's a staffing issue that's something we need to deal with. I believe what needs to happen is Carl's gonna be going to the Board of Selectmen, I think, with some suggestions for discussion purposes, to talk about how we should handle this. It may come in front of this board too. But I think that, you know, the town needs to come up with how we want to handle this. And there are multiple ideas that we talked about and bounced around. But it's not that we felt like we had to come up with a solution for this. This may be, just like every other road that we've done so far, public road, public drainage, to be publicly maintained. But it's our job as EPW, working for its Selectmen, to come up with a plan on how we really are going to be doing that. Because I think it's just getting to a point that we have more than we can handle, and so we need to start looking at that. And I don't think that's the fault of this one development. It's just been, you know, happening over time, and it needs to be addressed.
So what you're saying is that without recommendations in terms of how we might deal with it, what we've presently been doing is the acceptable practice? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's a public road with a public drainage system. Everything right now, there's nothing really in place otherwise than for it all to be publicly maintained. But we did throw out lots of other options, but Carl thought those needed to be more discussed with the Board of Selectmen versus us just making a decision at EPW proposing it here. He thought, you know, we need to be consistent with what we do, and to make a decision, it needs to go to the board, though, and discuss it there.
As, as a second option, I think the planning board would be very interested since it pertains to our development regulations. And we'd certainly like to hear from the Public Works Director in terms of directions and where things are going, so that we can be somewhat prepared too, for the same scenario.
And I had asked that, is it, do we come here first, or do we go there? And I believe Carl thought the right step was to go to the Selectmen first, for discussion purposes, and then maybe thought would be come here and discuss that with you, maybe as like a workshop, to try and see how, you know, how both boards feel.
Okay. Jim?
I'm not sure you need to address this tonight, but the, the Abutter to the north has been concerned about drainage. So I, I guess I'm gonna look to you to address that either tonight or when you come back, to how this is going to function to not, not recreate a drainage or minimize whatever problem exists.
Well, I can, I can tell you how we are planning to do it based on plan, but when we come back again, surely Megan would have had a chance to look at that as well. The, all the drainage from our product site comes downhill. And we are taking all the drainage from our roadway and going into, as well as the slope here, and putting into this infiltration detention area. So that's being infiltrated and treated before it gets released. This is a wetland through here. There's the pond and the outlets through here. So this is the low part of our site near the front. So everything from Montaloma, Lona Road coming out to the south is all coming down to our area through here. And everything from here where it goes back uphill, we either go back into the wetland here or out to the pond, and then we discharge. So we're not discharging any of our water to the north. Actually, our water's coming down to the south. If the Abutter you're speaking of perhaps is up over here off-site, we have a lot of wetlands in through here, and we plan to discharge our drainage so between the infiltration and what needs to discharge, so that we're not gonna have any impact as far as increase the rate of runoff from the site. But Megan can confirm with that too.
Other members of the board? Since this is a public hearing, are there any members of the Public Works who can speak and reference this project this time? Yes, ma'am? Please come forward.
Hi, how's everybody tonight?
Good.
I'm Jacqueline Gagnon. I'm the neighbor to the north. And I was listening to the bigger issues that are being talked about tonight, but I do want to talk about drainage. I, I, I was taken by the remark that was made about the drainage design proving to be a challenge, and then talking about, well, we're doing it with a couple of exceptions, and we're only want to go twenty-five feet. And I think that, you know, variance isn't always the answer, and having exceptions to our rules isn't always the answer. Sometimes the answer is to change the plan, and I hope that you stay open-minded about the possibility that maybe the answer is not to bend the rules, it's to change the plan. And if we are gonna have long-term problems, why are we sneaking another problem in? Why don't we take care of the long-term solution before we sneak in another problem? But drainage is my key concern. I put a letter forward to the board way back in May, asked it to be read into the record. I'm only gonna confine my remarks to what I understand now is my business, which is my property value. That curve in the road, that first three-hundred-and-twenty feet, it's my understanding that it curves downhill both directions, towards the curve. And my wetland specialist, who's spoken before this board before, advises me that just three inches of rain, which is not uncommon, is gonna put more than two-thousand cubic feet of water running in that direction. So I don't know what the distance is of that infiltrated collection area from my property, but two-thousand cubic feet of water is a lot of water. And if that area needs to be maintained, and there's no plan for it being maintained, that water is going to affect my property. It's going to. I've had, as you know, effect to my property already, both with flooding in my basement increasing over the period of time that this area- both with flooding in my basement increasing over the period of time that this area was logged, as well as the damage to my in-ground pool resulted in having to replace the liner because of the pressure of the groundwater just bubbling up and flooding that area. So I'm interested in what the proximity is of that area to my property and what the plan is going to be to maintain and make sure that it's cleared and operating properly because it's going to be a serious problem to my property. I'm also concerned about the ownership and management of the open space. I'd like to see the board really address that. In particular, the control and restriction of motorized vehicles in the open space. This area is being overrun with motorized vehicles. The, what do they call them? The four-wheelers that are doing a lot of damage to the property. So, you know, looking at this plan, what is the developer's responsibility to purchase and install barriers and gates and put signage if this is not going to be turned into an ATV park? I say this because this area that's being proposed for development is a high density. It is a high-density housing development in an area that is agricultural, where the houses are far apart, there's plenty of wooded land, there's plenty of wildlife, there's plenty of recreational outdoor opportunities. But that area has been completely stripped of vegetation. And there's going to be tremendous noise pollution as it is. And this is already, in my opinion, impacting my property value because I'm losing the quality of life that I enjoyed as an abutty, the peace and quiet and the privacy of the neighborhood, the amount of traffic, the amount of, you know, what, 17 weed whackers, 17 lawnmowers, 17 leaf blowers. Because there's no vegetation there, that noise is going to impact my life and my privacy. So, you know, those are my primary concerns. I had other concerns about the safety of the bus picking up kids on the road because there is a tremendous sun blindness. And it's going to start in about seven or eight weeks. You're going to have tremendous sun blindness as you drive towards Manchester on that road, and it's extremely dangerous. And I would hope that the board would consider that as well because it's just not safe for the kids. You see kids walking their dogs on that road, and it's just really dangerous. Thank you.
I have a question of you. You mentioned a consultant who advised you that there's a certain amount of drainage. Can you explain, you said 2,000 cubic feet?
Well, if you take, you know, this like road surface, impermeable surface, and you take just the first 320 feet, and you put three inches of water running off of that, the accumulated effect of that water is going to be over 2,000 cubic feet by whatever mathematical formula they, you know, calculate the movement of water. But that's a huge amount of water.
But, yes, it is a lot of water. It's more than in my swimming pool. But I think in the analysis, the drainage analysis will be thoroughly reviewed by the Public Works Department. And I'm sure, at least I have all the faith that they'll catch any errors and omissions and make sure the drainage is done properly up there, to assure that that doesn't happen. And I think there are other people who will be reviewing that plan also. Carlos?
Can I pursue that a little further?
Yes.
Did I hear you correctly that you said your certified wetland scientist rendered an opinion relative to the runoff?
I asked him to look at the plans initially with me because I have not, you know, we talked about way back, Mr. Aiman talked about bowling alley roads and aesthetics. And we have two bowling alley roads in that neighborhood already. We have Ledgewood and we have Serenitas. You can walk all the way down Serenitas, and you never see a house. To me, that's more aesthetically pleasing than walking into this, you know, neighborhood that's an intercity neighborhood.
I just wanted to pursue the-
Aesthetics aside, yes, I had him look at that road because I didn't like the idea that there's two parts of the road, both going downhill, that is closest to my property. That's the area that's closest to my property.
Can I ask you who that wetland scientist was?
Peter Spear.
Is Peter Spear a professional engineer?
He's appeared before this board as a wetland specialist.
My question is, is he a professional engineer?
I don't believe he's an engineer.
Qualified to render opinions relative to engineering analysis?
No, he's a wetland specialist.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm not an engineer either. I just pump my basement.
Thank you, Jac.
Anybody else?
Any other members of the board have a question? Jacqueline? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the Public Works who can speak and reference this particular project? And its application? Yes, Eric?
I'd just like to give an additional piece of information. We've talked with the Conservation Commission at length. And Keith Martel, the representative in Blackwire, has talked about the Skatikwak. I don't know if it's River Council now or what the name of that is, the Conservancy Group. And we talked with the commission. Our proposal would be is to have the land itself deeded to the town so the open space would be owned by the town. We are providing public access. And that the conservation easement would be held by the Skatikwak. And the maintenance will be done by the Skatikwak to make sure that it's maintained. Keith has to put up an escrow account or money for perpetual maintenance by the Skatikwak. We don't have the agreements and everything written right here, but I believe they're going to be before the Selectmen. That is an attempt by us to have the, all of that in the public domain and protected and looked at by a separate agency. We really also did not want to have 17 different homeowners have actually ownership interest. They have no other ownership interest any more than anybody else in town. And we had provided a couple parking spaces in the front where they can walk down the trail here and keep on going out. We still will have access with the trail coming out to the back here. And there's other access points to the property as well. So just to answer that question, we are proposing the town to own it, but the Skatikwak will have the easement, as well as the requirement to maintain that.
I'm not sure how the board member's feeling about the town taking on the responsibility of property and taking it off the tax rules.
Well, and I can just say that PLC has not voted to assume such responsibilities as a board member. I can say that.
In answer to your questions, it doesn't have a lot of value once it's restricted, so I...
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just-
I wouldn't let that drive the bus, but...
No, I know. I don't think it would either, but I'm just questioning whether- We'd want to hear from the Selectmen whether they want to assume ownership of this parcel. And we'd like to hear about that fairly soon. So can we depend on you to, Phil, to broach that subject and provide the board with some input and expertise?
As long as I have the help of our esteemed plan, I'm going.
Okay. You know, as long as we can come up with some advice to the board as to how we should proceed, and favorable to the Selectmen.
No, and I understand your question because every time we're presented with the opportunity to accept land, the question that comes up when you own land, also management and resources and it costs money.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions for Mr. Mitchell? Any thoughts or comments about the design, layout, anything that's kind of broad? The details are going to be forthcoming. I'm assuming there's going to be a lot more detail in reference to the concept of, and the layout of this particular project.
I'll just say I'm not too keen into going into setback areas. I mean, we enacted these setback areas, and all we see is application after application going into them. I'm not too keen about it.
And what setback areas are you concerned about, Barbara?
Well, I think there was two, I think, that you requested.
Some of the wetland setbacks. Obviously, we have areas where we cross into the setback for roadway through here.
Yep.
But we have some in the back of lot number four and number three, and access to the open, access to the detention pond here, which will also be the open space, is between the 50-foot line and the 100-foot line.
Board members, any particular comments, references excursion into the wetland setback areas on the site? By the buildings?
I mean, I just think it's significant when you have to go into the wetland setback to manage the drainage for wetlands.
I did notice that there are some grating that extends into wetland setbacks.
Yeah.
There's a lot of extension into setbacks.
We've had some serious discussions about that in the past.
Are we still waiting for a report from the Conservation Commission on that, or do we have that?
We don't have a written report from the Conservation Commission. Other members of the board? Then I would anticipate that the applicant would work proactively with the staff and Public Works to move the project forward and refine the engineering details in such a fashion that our experts deployed by the town can assure us that it meets our standards and what have you. But I would entertain a motion to continue to... And I would ask Eric, in terms of timing, when would you anticipate wanting to be back to the board? Or continue working on this application?
I have a Brian staff report. Recommendation that he had was October 14th, and I think that's appropriate because the final drainage design will be sent to the state as well as the Public Works next week. And that'll give them more than the three weeks they need to review that and have some bad report. So I think a month from now, we would be able to do that.
So you're wishing to come back here before you have state appro, final state approval on those kinds of issues?
Yes, because we still want to work through the, any other issues that may come up and provide additional answers by then. We will hopefully have met with the Selectmen as far as the ownership of the open space and that, and try to work through those issues.
Members of the board, I would entertain a motion for continuance. So move for October 14th?
Second.
Second, motion by Phil, seconded by Carlos. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, extensions, motion carries. Thank you.
Recognizing that Harvard objects, may we take our forty breaks?
Well, we have-
We have one more, but you take it away.
We have one more application to review this evening. And I think it would be appropriate to take a 10-minute recess. So moved.
So moved.
So ruled.
Landscaping business located on property along with residence and to build a 2,400-square-foot barn for the business. Owner here, revocable trust Patty Hill Road. Zone agricultural continued from the July 22, 2010 meeting. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've gone through a lot of this before-
Uh, we've gone through a lot of this before, but I'll just briefly mention it for those who have maybe not been here before. Uh, the property is located on Patty Hill Road, uh, one seventy-seven Patty Hill Road is the address, uh, on the west side of Patty Hill. Uh, it's an elongated property shown in red there on the map. Uh, this is an old aerial of the, of the property prior to when any, uh, work has been done on the, on the property. Some additional, um, photos from more recent in two thousand and six when work had started to been done and the salt shed had been added. Um, these are, I'll just go through those quickly. Um, the request has been to approve a site plan for the landscape business on the subject property. Uh, the applicant did get a variance approved on January sixth, two thousand and nine, allowing landscape business in the agricultural zone property with twenty-five foot setbacks rather than the required one hundred foot setback. Uh, that variance required additional screening of all materials and equipment on the property as well as a floor to their salt shed. This is a, uh, an existing conditions map, uh, just detailing out what the property currently looks like. I'll not spend a lot of time here either. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing, uh, a barn in this location here to move the salt shed which is currently about here over to here, and then to propose to add some storage bins of mulch and other landscape materials along the north side there. As well as move their fueling station from the south side over in here to this location here and to create a concrete pad in front of the fueling station to, uh, for, for vehicles to be able to fuel up on that location and to avoid spilling. Um, this is just some additional pages from your site plan packet. This is a, uh, a view of a cut through of what it would look like from, uh, the McIlary property as far as how tall the, uh, building would be. This is a re- representation of the height of the building currently right here. And that, or not currently, but as proposed. This is representation of where one would be standing and seeing and viewing any, any, uh, portion of the property down below. This is just a, a representation of the drainage plan. As you can see, the drainage is, um, in the form of several detention basins along the south side of the property with outflows, um, into the ditch that's down below, uh, along the property line border. They've also got some detention out here next to the, um, entrance to the property, um, close, closer out towards Patty Hill Road, which would be between, um, the Gibson property here and where they would be doing this employee parking. Um, this is their driveway plan, just showing the location of the driveway and how that's to be configured. They also gave some, um, site distance drawings there, just cutting off the, the, uh, existing, um, topography that is there and making it more smooth transition. These are the proposed elevations. Since the last meeting, uh, they, the applicant has removed the cupola from the top, which was a concern for height. Um, so this height now conforms to the regulations in the zoning ordinance. Um, there's also some elevations been, that have been provided of the salt shed. Just a standard siding salt shed with, uh, uh, three sides clo- enclosed and the front to be open, remaining open for acc- access to fill and, uh, fill up the trucks with salt. Uh, as far as key considerations, uh, there are wetlands on the property, uh, but DES has submitted a letter stating that is inconclusive that a wetland was filled with the work that would, has been done. Um, Butter Dean Gibson has contested that question and asked for a peer review. The peer review was done and is included in your packet. The letter came from Linda McGoon from the DES. Uh, she upheld the original decision from the wetland reviewer that had determined that, uh, no conclusive evidence was found that the wetland had been filled. Staff has reviewed the most recent site plan submitted by the applicant and has provided comments in the form of con- uh, conditions of approval in the staff report. Those are listed at the end of the report. Uh, some, some additional key considerations. The salt shed does show a concrete pad to be put on the floor. The salt shed also has a, uh, pad in front of it as well as a fueling station, has a pad in front of it for, um, any spilling that would help towards the environmental concerns of spilling. Um, the max height is thirty-three, we already discussed that, thirty-five, I'm sorry. The applicant does not need an alteration of terrain permit according to the DES. This is a DES determination, and therefore staff is not going to, um, go further than that. The variance states that there, the additional screening of material and equipment and that all buildings and materials shall meet the twenty-five foot setback. Uh, staff feels that those requirements have been met by their landscape plan and, and seeing their, their, uh, site plan, there, there, there are no encroachments on the twenty-five foot setback with buildings and materials. Uh, this is just a little bit of a timeline. The applicant began grading the site back in two thousand and four. They were, um, they built a shed with no permit. Um, they were notified sometime between, uh, by, by Mr. Derek Horn of a, of the violation and in two thousand and five, I believe, and I forgot to put that on the timeline, but, um, the applicant, uh, got an electrical permit from the town, and this is a piece of information that I don't believe has been shared before with the planning board, um, for one service outlet. So, uh, I think the point that is trying to be made with that is that they were attempting to follow some sort of a process um, and did not ignore every single rule, um, despite the fact that several, um, things were done without permits. Um, subsequent to that, they submitted for their variance, um, in oh eight. They got their, uh, variance approved in, on, early oh nine, and they submitted for their site plan in early two thousand and ten. And we're now working on, um, all the public hearings for site plan. Um, they also were issued a letter from the town stating that the salt shed and fueling station should be discontinued. That has since been discontinued. Um, and also the salt shed has been emptied so that no further contamination can result from, uh, salt being there. This is a table from the last time regarding the salt testing of the properties, so I'm not gonna repeat on any of this information, but it's here in case, um, it's brought up again, so that's just for information. Uh, there's no waivers being requested. This is just a photo that I had included last time, uh, minus the cupola, so that's the only one that's left. Um, but that would be, uh, um, a potential, that's, that's my best rendering at what it might look like from the, um, McIlary property if the barn were in place. Showing that the trees would initially provide some, um, some screening to the barn. The applicant has included a landscape plan in your, in your packet, and that landscape plan does actually show additional trees to be located in front of the, um, barn in this location as well as down to the side. Those trees would be, um, fourteen to sixteen feet in this location tall. And then I think the trees over in this location are twelve to fourteen feet tall. So they would be taller than the existing trees there, providing additional screening, uh, for that barn and for the equipment and, and materials on the site.
Brian, can I ask your question?
Yep.
Those trees be fourteen to sixty feet tall at planting, at time of planting?
Yes.
At planting?
Yes.
All right, I question further on this photo. What is this box on the left?
Right here?
Yeah.
This is Mr. McIlary's barn. It's, uh.
Is that what's this garage right here?
Yes.
That looks closer to the trees than the other building.
That's, that barn is only a few feet away from the property line and is definitely taller than probably what this barn may end up being.
That barn get a variance for setback?
No, it did not. Back when, back when the permit was issued, I believe, um, it had been shown on the plan as being far enough away, and so, um, the plan wa- the permit was issued.
It wasn't built in accordance with the plan?
Not in accordance with the plan. Um, so staff rec- recommendation, um, that we hear the applicant's presentation, um, continue the public hearing, hear from the app- from the, uh, public, and then staff feels that the plan is in a sufficient nature to be approved. So our recommendation is to approve, uh, subject to the conditions that have been listed in the staff report and any others that the board feels that they want to add during the meeting tonight. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Members of the board, do you have any immediate questions or observations for Brian before I open it up to the applicant's presentation? Seeing none, is there a representative of the applicant here wishing to present to the board?
It's my name is Kevin Valman, and I'm the attorney with Divine Millman representing the applicant. There's actually several representatives, I will not take much of your time. Um, uh, Don Duval from Duval Survey is here, he's going to present some of the changes to the plan. Um, expect that'll be brief, uh, you've already seen the plan, and, and Brian, as always, has done a great job doing an overview. Uh, the, Bob Rook, the engineer, is here, he's going to explain some of the, uh, engineering and more specifically some of the, the changes to the engineering based on, um, his discussions with, uh, with Megan and the, um, the town staff. Um, and Eric Buck is the landscape architect, is here to present the, uh, the landscaping plans that have been submitted. Um, we'll let them get started, just very briefly, I just wanted to, uh, clarify a few things. Uh, the, the first is to just clarify, um, it, from, uh, Brian's presentation, uh, the, the variances that were issued for this, uh, property. Um, and to clarify that he was issued, uh, Mr. Forniger was issued, um, two use variances, um, essentially a variance for two primary uses on the, on the property, uh, both residential and landscaping use. Um, so the, the twenty-five foot setbacks actually apply in that case, the hundred, there was no variance for the hundred foot setback because it only applies, uh, in the case of where you have landscaping as an accessory use. Since there are two primary uses, uh, the twenty-five foot setback applies and, um, to further clarify the, um, all of the, the new or, um, structures to be moved, um, should the, the landscaping and business structures uh, will meet that twenty-five foot setback. Um, I also wanted to just indicate, um, so I know it, it has come up, the, uh, Butter's attorney has provided a letter. I'm not sure that any of you have had a chance to read it, but one of the things that he raises as a potential condition is the, um, the, uh, salt monitoring guidelines. Uh, those mirror, um, the guidelines that were discussed, uh, and approved by the conservation commission and have been provided by the applicant, and just to clarify, uh, those were provided as a, you know, it's a condition of approval. And, uh, finally, just to clarify some of the issues with the permitting, my, my belief is that the, the electrical permit was raised because it was, uh, Mr. Forniger's understanding that a building permit wasn't, uh, wasn't necessary for that type of structure, and so he only, a, he or his representative only got a electrical permit. To clarify though, the, the, both the salt shed and the fuel station will be, will be moved and will require, uh, new permits. And, uh, finally, I know the, the permitting on this property has been a, certainly a source of contention, understandably so, and just wanted to, uh, clarify and, and to ask this board that, you know, we, we've attempted to make to address all the concerns with the permitting and, uh, believe we've done so. So there may have been certainly permitting issues in the past, uh, but, and we believe and hope that the reason we're here tonight is to get everything properly in order, and that's what these, the plans that are before you are, are, will do. So, uh, thank you, and I'll, I'll let, uh, Don Duval, uh, present. Let's, the board has any questions?
I, I, I have a question, um, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It's just, I, I want to understand what, um, the applicant's attorney said about the hundred foot, about the setbacks. I'm, I'm confused, I guess, that the provisions in five point thirteen do not apply? Or that a variance was granted from them?
No, a grant, uh, that the, the provisions of five thirteen do not apply. That was the zoning board's interpretation and, and Derek Horn's interpretation, that the, that some of the, and I, I apologize, I don't have the, the ordinance in front of me, but that the requirement for site plan approval applied for any landscaping use. Uh, the hundred foot setback only applied in the case of landscaping as an accessory use.
Okay, I, I'll ponder that.
But that was the determination you got?
That was the determination we got.
We agree with it.
Yes.
The determination.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Duval, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, uh, Don Duval for the applicant, Brian Fornier. Brian Rose has essentially covered everything that I normally would say. Basically, you know, the existing conditions. Our intent is to build the proposed barn. Anything that was on this side of the property, the bins for the, uh, various materials, fueling station, everything that's being moved away from the southerly, uh, property line, be put on the northerly line. The only thing I haven't shown on my plan, which I believe the engineer has on here is, Brian had a conversation with the fire department as to the suitability, let's call it, of the, uh, fire, uh, fueling station. The only comment that the fire came up with, again, it's verbally, uh, and we've agreed to it, is that some bollards are to be placed as a safety measure around or along the, uh, front of the fueling station. I believe there's like three of them. We had previously submitted, uh, a sketch of how the vehicles would be placed inside the building and the over, and the, uh, and the, uh, shed area during the summer. All the salt is out. So salt spreaders is, I'm not sure if it's his bucket load, if he has one, that type of equipment will be stored inside the salt shed when it's not in use. Just for the record, there was a comment way back when about the lack of permits for the septic system. Septic system has been properly permitted and installed. Again, the entrance to the property, we are moving, proposing to move the entrance for a little better site visibility getting into the site. Just for the, the comment that there was that existing barn on the abutting property, requirement of the fire department was any new structure would be thirty feet from any abutting structure. So we have moved and we've shown our building, our proposed building such that it will meet the fire ordinance. Basically, I think most of what you probably want to hear is the engineering reviews and the comments with Megan. We also have someone that's gonna adjust the landscaping. As you see on my plan, I'm just showing what's existing and as Brian mentioned, there will be additional screening placed inside or around these existing ones and some larger ones around this area where we've showed some proposed parking during the, during the day. I believe all the issues, as far as I understand, with the Conservation Commission, they're on board with it. They have, I don't know if I want to call it a series or a list of recommendations and procedures that are gonna be handled upon approval, if that's the board's desire. So basically, as far as the survey and the layout presentation, I think Brian and what little I've given, take care of all of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if this is a fair question for Don or for somebody else, but I know it's condition of approval number two on the staff's recommendation. Property owners shall follow best management practices for designing construction of the salt shed and the drainage around the shed. Does this design comply with those best management practices?
As far as I know, they do, I'm not...
Do you know what they are?
I'm guessing that, I'm assuming best manager, it's basically erosion control and I think that's what they're talking about.
But you don't, you don't know what they are?
No, off the hand, no, I think...
If somebody else wants to address them, I just want to find out what they are.
Yes, sir.
If I may, the DES puts out best management practices for salt sheds, but being referred to there, that was the intent. Brian contacted Mitch Locker at DES and provided the plans to him, received an email back indicating that the plans met DES's best management practices. If you have any email? That was provided in the conservation, I do not know whether it was, it was provided in the year, it was discussed. We can, we can certainly have provided, but the intent was to follow the published best management practices from DES.
Well, I'm, I guess I'd like the designer of the plan to tell us that's the case. I understand the applicant thinks it is and his attorney, but Don is the one who designed that, so I guess I...
It says I did design the actual salt shed and best managers practices. Honestly, I can, I know my gut feeling is what they're talking about is basically, I think usually with the best managers practice, I know when we do subdivisions, whatnot, is basically usually concerned with runoff, erosion control, so when you're digging, placing your materials that you're not having runoff go onto abutting properties.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it has anything to do with best management practice, I don't believe it has anything to do with the physical construction of the shed.
Those best...
Yes, sir.
If I may, those best management practices are published in a DES fact sheet that has, that has been provided, so it's, it's on the record, it's within the, it's been provided to this board and the planning staff. We can, I don't know that, I don't believe I have a copy tonight, but we, it is a, it is a list and to clarify, there, there are some, it, it doesn't only deal with drainage, it does deal with the actual structure and we have hands of that structure as well with it.
Are you saying that the best management practices has been supplied to the staff?
It's a DES fact sheet that has been supplied.
Okay, all right.
It was submitted prior.
Okay. It's in my pile here, I'm just asking.
Too many meetings.
Had a last meeting.
All right, you still have the floor, Don?
I think if that takes care of the site presentation, I'll probably tell all of Bob Ruck to ask as many questions may have with the...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think maybe this would be actually an appropriate time for Megan to discuss like drainage that she's been talking about with you guys.
Okay, fine by me.
You're on.
Do you want to hear from me or do you want to hear from their...
Oh, I want to hear, well...
Yeah, I want to have an engineer talk about drainage.
I think the engineer would be more qualified to talk about drainage.
Yeah.
And so we'll wait for the engineer's presentation and we can kind of combine the two, if I may.
I'll make it in the color.
Please. Mr. Ruck?
Good evening, my name is Bob Ruck, I'm a registered professional engineer in Hampshire and four other states. I received some comments that I think you're referring to on Tuesday morning. And I did, with a lot of assistance with Megan, actually revised the plans to address the comments in that report. Resubmitted the plans with new drainage calculations on Wednesday and I worked through with Megan yesterday and today and I believe that we're all resolved. I do have copies, there were minor revisions made to the plans, I do have reduced copies for each of the board members if they'd like them.
Please.
Hope I got it right. Thank you. First, I'd like to go through the revisions that were made to the plan. The first are kind of clerical, kind of in the order that they were presented in the, in the, in the comments. They were asked to hatch the driveway to make it a little more visible and to make the driveway bolder, just to make it stand out on the plans. Those are kind of easy ones. Based on a prior revision that dealt with the grading in the back of the shed, there were some discrepancies between the elevation shown on the plan and some of the elevation shown in the construction details. Clarified those elevations and now they, they match. There was some language that was suggested to be added to note number four, which is now up in the corner. I've added that language verbatim right out of the recommendations that we received from staff. Bollards have been added at the front of the fuel shed as Don has, has mentioned. And the, the primary issue was resolved, the remaining drainage issues. So I'd like to get into a little bit of detail on the drainage system. Flow comes from north to south and we decided that because of the terracing, basically the terracing of the existing site, these ponds have to be leveled by their, by their nature. We broke it up into five detention ponds, four here, one down the corner, which kind of follows the existing contours of the site. Each of the ponds has a low-level outlet and then an overflow designed to accommodate bolt-to-fifty and a hundred-year storm with a foot of freeboard. So those, those have been resolved. Each pond will have a depth of approximately one foot nine or one foot ten inches for the fifty-year storm. The, comparing the pre-development and the post-development flow, we analyzed the pre-development flow for a twenty-five-year storm. And then we made sure that the post-development flow for a fifty-year storm was less than or equal to the pre-development twenty-five-year flow. In all the ponds, each of the ponds individually, the post-development fifty-year flow is less than the pre-development twenty-five-year flow. So it, it occurs for the site as a whole and each one of the ponds individually. There's a dry well system here that takes just the roof drainage, there's a swale behind to take drainage coming from the north and direct it into the detention pond. I'll get into a lot more detail as the questions come up, but I just want to reiterate that the pre-development, post-development flows are, are less. And then we do have one foot of freeboard in a fifty years, not only in a fifty-year storm, but also in a hundred-year storm. Like to thank Megan for, I dropped this on her yesterday and then we talked through today and she did take some time to review the plans and I believe she's in concurrence that we've addressed all of the comments relative to drainage.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Jim.
Speaking as a completely non-engineer, but we heard, sort of, we heard comment and testimony at the last hearing, I believe, about the potential instability of the banking on the southern edge of the property where the detention ponds or basins are located. Do you, do you have a chance to look at that banking and have any...
Yes, and I believe, I have looked at it and I also, part of the design makes sure that the, what we did was to keep the high water flow during the fifty-year storm. In this pond, it's at least eight feet away from the corresponding elevation on the slope. In most cases, it's ten to twelve feet in these. The filling was done, I believe, in two thousand and four, due to the freeze storm cycle, everything is compacted at this point in time. My professional opinion is because we've kept them away from the top of the bank and these are actually excavated into the site, it's not a fill situation, it's actually these, these, the bottom of these ponds are three feet lower than the, the bank adjacent to it. So we're actually cutting into the site and having these ponds with the outlets that are proposed actually, in my opinion, improves not having the flow come directly over the site and down the slope unimpeded. This, this is a slow release outlet at the low level and you only have flow here during the fifty and the hundred-year storms. My opinion is not an issue.
I'd like to ask a question in terms of the slope. And I'd ask you, Megan, the same thing. The slope, when we look at site plans, what is the generally accepted slope ratio for site development plans? Is it one to one, two to one, three to one?
Depends what we're talking about. It's on the edge of the road, we have requirements for slopes off roads and swales, but there's no restriction when you're building your site. That's why sometimes you see vertical retaining walls, things like that, there's no restriction on...
If you have a slope, what I'm leading up to, if we, if we know we have a slope of two to one, say, there's a prescribed methodology to stabilize that banking?
No, there's all kinds of different methodologies, there's...
Is one, are methodologies proposed in this design solution to stabilize that banking?
There's no, like new, we really just, they, they added a note about stabilizing it additionally if needed. I went out and looked at it and, you know, it's, it's growing with grass and appears to be fairly stable. I don't see any major erosion happening anywhere. You know, if we were gonna get really picky about, do we see any exposed gravel in a spot that looks a little bare, I'm, I'm sure I could find one or two spots or like, you know, if I'm gonna be really picky and say, add a little more lomensee to this spot or that spot. But does it look like an unstable slope that's washing away or eroding from storms on a regular basis? No, it doesn't. Is it a steep slope? Yes, it's a steep slope, but it appears to be stabilized and not causing any ongoing problem. There's all kinds of ways to do additional stabilization if the board felt as though that was needed. I don't feel as though it needs to be rebuilt and restabilized. The note was added kind of for protection if it gets to a point that it needs some additional stabilization that can be dealt with. I didn't find it necessary to require it to be rebuilt in any manner or at a lesser slope. Because again, I don't think we put that restriction on other site plans, I think you can have a slope as steep as you want as long as it's stabilized and functions.
Okay.
All proposed construction is no steeper than three to one.
That's a proposed construction.
Right.
That's not the existing condition, right?
No, that's what Megan was talking about.
Okay. Call it.
I guess I want to follow up a little more on the concern of the stability of the slopes and if we put in detention basins, how are they to be finished off and I guess to expound upon that, expand upon that a little bit. Are you able to prevent the soils in that fill section from becoming saturated by water infiltrating down through the bottom and they're perhaps destabilizing those slopes in any manner? I mean, is that a concern? Did you look at that?
I don't, I haven't looked at the specific soils. There is a low-level outlet, so the ponds will drain over time. So it is, it is a detention pond, it is built three feet lower than the current.
I, I guess what I'm wondering is, should we consider lining those ponds like with, with a clay liner or something so that we don't get saturation of the soils and thereby perhaps compromise those fill slopes?
In my opinion, it would be better to infiltrate, provide groundwater recharge. I, I don't see a slope stability issue because of the distance that we've kept these ponds away from the slope itself.
Okay.
I, I think the groundwater infiltration is the, the way things are going now is a better solution.
I just want to make sure we considered that because I know that's a concern that...
That's why we kept them away, eight, ten, twelve feet from the, from the banking.
Members of the board, have any other questions for Mr. Ruck? Jim?
I don't know if Mr. Ruck is the proper recipient, but I'll say this, given this applicant's creative interpretation of some of our rules, what assurance do we have that these will be built as design? Are we gonna have an onsite inspector? Are we gonna require a certification from the applicant's engineer if they're built in accordance with the plan? I frankly don't, don't have a warmest of your kind.
That was one of my notes on the back of my list is that inspections of the work by the municipality at the owner's expense.
Okay, so we'll have to create an inspection, so I could just listen to Mr. Ruck about the placement, the distance from the slope seems to be of some significance, I mean, I want to have assurance that they're built in accordance with the plan.
I would agree with you, Jim, it's a pretty tight site. There's not a lot of room for error in placement of, whether it's detention ponds or structures or any of these other things, so I think we'd condition approval to require an as-built and that it conforms with the design specs.
So Mr. Ruck was thinking that would be not his call, I understand.
Yeah, and I believe you, you, I mean, just Megan and her staff would, would monitor the construction to move.
I get the question of who, who should be at that burden, whether the town's fairly the one to do it, or do we require the applicant to hire a person to certify to the town, like Mr. Ruck or somebody? That's a question for Megan on her capacity, but...
I'll ask her right now. Megan, which do you prefer? It's gonna be all your fault.
On some previous site plans, we have hired it out because they were larger, like Abbey and condos. That was a, you know, there haven't been many site plans where the board has wanted inspections, it's more of a newer thing that we've been doing. And so with Abbey and Square, it was left to be either the town or a town representative. And in that case, because of everything we'd have going on, we hired that out to, I think, VHB and they did the inspections over there. Because that was a fairly large project, a lot to respect. And this is not, this is not that big, so I, I don't think it's a huge deal for us to take on some inspections, you know what I mean? And, you know, it's... And, you know, charge them out or whatever, you know, like we would if it was a new public work or something. You know, it's just going to be a lot less intensive, obviously, than a library or something.
But it'd be your responsibility to determine whether it was you or it was a consultant that the town hired at the owner's expense, is that correct?
Say that again, it would be...
It, it'd be up to the Department of Public Works to determine whether they did it in-house or a consultant was employed at the owner's expense.
Yes, we usually kind of look at when they're about to start construction, where are we at? And we have the time to handle that and if not, then we retire them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ruck? Yes, Jim?
Again, I'm not sure what, how much falls within your ballot, but the, given the, the, what appears to be a runoff issue involving salt and also I have concerns about the fuel system, although it's certainly in a better location, does your design address those or were you dealing with the water and...
Water, but any flow that's coming north to south will wind up in one of these ponds.
Are those, do those treat or just detain?
Similar to what, because of the extended detention, there is some treatment, similar to what the old treatment swales and things like that. Because the water's detained, it settles out finer particulates and I can't tell you the chemistry, but the grasses in the, in the ponds treat somehow. I don't know the chemistry myself.
Well, have they been designed to those standards or not? I mean, they're just a...
So these design as grass, grass?
I think it calls for them to be seeded, all these slopes to be seeded, long been seeded, including interior of the detention ponds?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ruck. Is there another presenter?
Yes, Eric Buck on the landscaping.
My name is Eric Buck. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of New Hampshire with Pollock Land Planning. I'm here tonight to present the proposed landscape plan to add to the screening for the proposed development. The plan shows here, the darker circles are the existing trees that have already been planted. It's a mix of fir and spruce trees.
Don't we have this in files?
It was in our packet and it was...
Could you get a copy of this?
The darker circles are the existing conifer trees that are there now. They're a mix of fir and spruce trees ranging anywhere from six to thirteen feet in height. We're proposing a mix of both evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs to go in amongst those on the inward side mostly of the existing trees. The trees that are going to be installed range in height from ten feet to sixteen feet. The conifer trees are twelve to fourteen feet at the time of installation. The deciduous trees, maples and birches are going to be in the ten to fourteen foot range, all of them having a caliper size of, of two and a half to three inches, the diameter of the trunk. Additionally, we're proposing a lower understory planting to help add some aesthetic value to the screening. That's going to be a mix of native dogwoods, frisithia, and myburnham and other flowering native shrub. The goal is to screen not only the proposed barn, but also all of the storage facilities, the fuel station, the salt shed, the dumpster. We're just trying to sort of infill and increase what has already been installed. I do have a rendering of what the proposed landscaping will look like up against the sides of the proposed barn. You can see, you can see the mix of conifer evergreen trees as well as deciduous. Is there any questions?
Members of the board, Jim?
I assume Mr. Fornier maybe has some skill in this department, but what's the, what's your recommendation on ensuring survival of trees?
Following the standards...
Let me preface that, we've had them been planted and they go by another year and they look spindly and dead and...
I mean, the plans call for guarantee of a year of health. That's sort of the industry standard, the American Nursery Association requires that. Mr. Fornier being a landscape contractor, you know, I'm guessing is going to install his own plant material, so I, I don't know if, I don't believe Goffstown has any, this may fall under the inspection, post-inspection end of things, but if they're installed following the standards, the, the industry standards are in the plan set, the likelihood of survival is, is good.
I mean, we could always impose more stringent conditions. We may want to extend that up to three years to monitor them and assure seventy-five percent survival rate at the end of three years.
I feel like some performance standard built in on this.
Wetlands restoration requires seventy-five percent. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Oh, is that where you got that from? I thought that was pretty clever, off the top of your head.
I assume that the species you're using are salt tolerant?
Yes.
Anywhere around the salt story?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I should probably clarify here that my rendering may bring a few questions. I mean, I'm showing plants grow, so, I mean, that's, that's sort of what we're trying to achieve here. I don't want to give the impression that this is what it's going to look like the day that the plant material is installed, but the material that is going in is larger than what is there and will provide more screening than, than what is...
Just for our clarification then, how many years' growth do you think your renderings represent?
The deciduous trees will grow at a rate of about a foot to eighteen inches a year and the conifers will be more the ten to twelve inches a year.
Since we're talking about material handling here, the potential for material coming onsite and leaving the site, I think there ought to be some provisions for controlling invasive species, for monitoring for invasives and, you know, removal of invasives if they happen to...
Within landscape areas or...
Well, it's just part of our approval. I don't know what, whether it's notes on the landscape plan or how we want to require that, but I think we ought to consider that.
How would you...
Yes, Barbara, you have a question?
I'm just wondering how you would ever incorporate that into...
Do you require removal? If they establish themselves on the, on the site, they need to be removed. That's all, so they don't, improperly disposed of, so that they don't spread.
Follow, are you talking about a certain species? Are you talking about invasive, I mean, are you talking about like any weeds?
No, no, invasive species. And then there's, there's listed, I'm sure you're aware.
Oh, okay, all right.
They're, they're specific species and they're considered to be invasive, but...
Just a clarification.
And, and, and it's not unusual when you're moving materials around to take the seed source and bring it to a new area and then it establishes itself someplace else in town. Now we've got a problem.
I understand.
Isn't that how we've got the Japanese knot weed in town?
Get that right.
That we're trying to eradicate?
Purple loose drive, a few other things like that.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Buck? Thank you. Any other presenter for the applicant? Members of the board, do we have any questions of the applicant at the moment?
Excuse me?
Yes, sir. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes, I am. My name's Dwight Lovejoy.
Can you please come forward and have a seat and you can talk to us?
My name's Dwight Lovejoy and I'm licensed master electrician and the issue was brought up about permits and everything. And first of all, I negotiated from the beginning with Mr. McIlary and Mr. Fornier so there wouldn't be another set of poles on the property. Mr. McIlary was worried about the view and all that. From that, we did get a permit and we installed a two-hundred amp service for future. And while we were there, there, I told Mark, the billing inspector, he was worried about a cord running from the barn and we took care of that. So we, we've been back several times and I've never hidden anything from Mark and I just wanted to keep that straight.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll open it up with a public comment. Anybody wishing from the public, wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have a question on the salt chloride monitoring guidelines. If you, I don't know when you want to go there, but whether you want to go there so the applicant can address that or do it at the end? I don't care where, could just...
I mean, it was in our packet. There was a package reference that, and I believe there were some indications of time and content and how often and what have you.
Yeah, I just...
We could certainly discuss it now, yes, if you'd like.
Um, I guess one is, is this the proposal by the, the applicant? I assume it is. It's just suspended in our...
Jim?
Some...
Yes.
This is taken, this is, it's taken from the Conservation Commission, what, what they arrived at, because it, it mirrors what their recommendations, what's, what understanding that I have.
I believe my understanding is this article is inconsistent with this CONCON's concern for salt monitoring.
Okay.
It is a recommendation to the board as being maybe the minimum standards to go by? That was what I was told.
And, well, I guess I'd like to know is, is, if this is the applicant's proposal based on its discussion with the Conservation Commission?
I'll ask the applicant. Are you aware of this document?
Yes.
And is this consistent with the discussions and conclusions of the CONCON when you presented?
Yes. The, a draft of this document was presented to the Conservation Commission at their meeting, I believe, August twenty-fifth. Based on discussions at that meeting, they asked for some revisions and this, these guidelines represent the revisions that were made by the applicant to reflect those, their comments.
Okay.
And it's being submitted by the applicant as a proposed addition of...
So has the Conservation Commission seen this?
I don't know. You mean this revised document?
Correct.
It was...
Yes, sir.
My, well, I, I should back up. I'm not sure. It was provided to the planning staff. I think the intent was that it go to Conservation Commission, but I, I don't know, maybe...
Okay.
I, I was there that night.
Excuse me, Mr. Fornier, correct?
Yep. I was there that night and we, we went through everything with them. Basically what it was is this was what they wanted, the revised, for what, we said exactly what they, the way they voted it, that's what we put it through. They wanted the three years, and then for being brought to, like, planning, name us to try, yeah, planning, and we're still going over every year to make sure that sodium chloride was more than reason.
Okay, thank you.
I think just how that we have.
Yes, Jim?
I have a substantive question. I, and I'm not sure the Conservation Commission is necessarily the authority on this, but the, in the enforcement paragraph, and I know the Conservation Commission has this, talks about the two-hundred fifty milligram per liter, which is the maximum contaminant level permitted by DES. But there's a difference between maximum and desire. And if you have a, a use that has contributed substantially to salt contamination, arguably, what is the proper standard? Is it the maximum permitted or is it some higher standard? Why is that? Because that's the maximum permitted, why is that the appropriate standard that has to be used? Let me give you an example. If you had that in your water supply, would you notice it? It may not be detrimental to health, but I'm not sure that's the sole, or is that the level that they've just decided is beyond below which they can't measure effects? I don't know what that means.
Well, I, I agree and you don't want to be taking action at the threshold level. And in fact, eleven F says if the test results show the levels exceed the maximum, then we're going to take some action. I mean, that, that shouldn't be. I mean, it shouldn't be, if the tests show that the, the levels approach, I don't know, pick a number, two hundred, which is below the two-fifty threshold, then it needs to be, I mean, we need to look at it a little more carefully, I think, but to say that it exceeds the level is already too late.
That's my concern, I guess.
Barbara?
I, I, I understand the points, but I don't hear anybody here with any basis or any presentation for making it a, a lower number, nor do I understand whether the test sites are consistent necessarily with any contaminant beyond that point in excess of that level. I mean, that's one of the reasons you have the test sites where they are. It's not the final, necessarily the final distribution site. I mean, I just think you can regulate yourself to death without any reason or basis. I mean, I think there's a reason there's a limit, say, you're not testing it a hundred feet from the site, you're testing it at test sites on the site. I just would like, in further point of this, I'd just like some clarification, because I believe Mr. Fornier held up something that doesn't look exactly like what we have. We have on page five of our packet a sodium chloride, if Mr. Fornier wants to look up revocable trust, and it says sodium chloride monitoring sample, and then it has re, yeah.
Pick a quote, please, come up.
And then at the bottom it has some sites. Is that what you have? Is it just different font? It just looked remarkably... Okay, you just held it up in the back of the room and it was very different, so I wanted to check.
Is it the same?
It's the same, it's the same. All right. So was this what, Mr. Fornier, what we have in our packet and what you have done before, after all these comments that we got from Conservation in our packet? Do you know, or Brian, do you know?
I believe they match, however, a simple comparison of each of the comments, I guess, for itself.
Well, all right, okay, so, but we can make them both, because I'm just noticing that there's something about silt and some other stuff in the Conservation Guidelines that I don't think are in this document, but as long as we, I think the intent is to have both. The applicant has tried to match some. If there's not some overlap, they're both, they're both going to be controlled. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at the moment? I'll open it up to the public or try to again.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Please step forward. Let us know who you are.
I will indeed. Thank you very much. My name is Jed Catlin. I'm an attorney with Baldwin and Catlin and I represent both the Butters, North and South, John McIlary and Dean and Teresa Gibson. I did submit by email a letter earlier today that some of you may have received. I apologize that it only came today, but as it turns out, it's premature having come today because you've got more technical information even later than that, that I haven't had a chance to look at. But I can speak to what I know and, and ask that you deal appropriately with the fact that you've only just gotten calculations, for instance, about the drainage coming into you today. I have brought with me several copies of my letter, for those of you who weren't able to get copies of the email that were sent around, so I'm happy to hand those out. And in additional, additionally, I have copies of the attachments that didn't come by email, so I don't want to flood you with paper, but I want to...
They did get it all.
You all got it. And as to the, the attachments were not there, I brought a number of those, but those are both men, items that are in your file. So if you confirm that you have them, I won't need to flood you again. The two attachments...
We actually did copy the attachments and send them in.
I didn't send them to you, but you noticed what they were. I didn't send them to you, but you noticed what they were. Thank you very much. And I will not burden you. What if, why don't I give you an original for it signed? And one to a proposed. All right, I'll try to be quick. It's, it's very late and I apologize. But with all due respect, I, I have to do my client justice and not skip things that need to be said. So I'm going to speak on about five different topics quickly and, and you know what they're going to be probably before I start. First, the detention ponds. I won't summarize my letter. You know your regs pretty well. But you know that you have authority under the site plan regs, sections four and six, and appendix C and D to deal with the detention ponds and their safety and effectiveness. It's the applicant's obligation to prove to you and do the engineering and supply the engineering to show that they will meet the standards in your, in your appendices. And those requirements involve handling the 50-year storm and consideration of the 100-year storm, foot of freeboard, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My point to you, and, and, and I hate to say this, and I hate to be in this position, is that though I was just told by the engineer that the calculations are on this sheet that he kindly handed me or counsel handed me this evening, but I heard him testify that it was submitted, well, on its face, it, it's corrected 9/8. So yesterday is when these, this plan was produced, shared with, with staff yesterday and/or today, and discussed today. So I want to suggest to you for one thing, that, that given that the rules for site plan approval is that the application be submitted, there be public notice so the public can come look at things and have reasonable chance to review it and comment to you. When you start getting the critical pieces of an application on the day of the application and the hearing, public notices fail. I, for instance, have had no chance to see this. But I would suggest beyond the fact that it's too late and you should not act on it tonight because you yourselves haven't seen it. Megan saw it today and was thanked for being available today, proving how late this was. You haven't seen it till tonight. I haven't seen it. I don't see any calculations on it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't pretend to be an engineer, but I've done this work for long enough to know that though I see dimensions, though I see slopes, and though I see, you know, out of the book boilerplate designs for the dry well and the storm drain pipe installation, and it looks all very good, nowhere on here, nowhere on here or any of the sheets, do I see any calculation of amount of flow. I don't see anywhere that there's any capacity. I don't see any volumes calculated or even indicated. I see rectangles. Where are the calculations that he's told you were supplied today to show you that in fact, the flow from this site will, will not exceed pre-storm?
Mr. Catlin? I'd like to suggest that the normal course of events is that those calculations are submitted on a separate document. We don't customarily get those on a set of plans.
Okay.
And they're separately submitted and reviewed by the town engineer and/or other consultants as deemed necessary.
I, 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 I hear you and I hope that's true. I don't know that that has been done in this case. If, if it has been, I'll stand corrected. But I, I haven't seen in the file from before, and I haven't seen today, any indication that that kind of hard engineering has been done. If it is, Megan, I, I hope you'll correct me. But, but, but again, I see a, a drawing that's almost a schematic. I don't see engineering. With, I, I mean, even if the calculations are elsewhere, at least some volume, volumetric. Well, I, I, I'll make my point that I don't believe from what I have seen, and I haven't been able to see it. And if I haven't been able to see it, I haven't had my statutory opportunity to review and comment. Sufficient engineering to carry the data proof to you and demonstrate to you, on which you can find reasonably that, that, that these ponds will capture what they need to, retain what they need to. Or the engineering, and, and Mr. Adams, Colas Adams, asked the question and I listened carefully to the answer. Where is the work to show what the soils are in the, in the, in the bank? We've been told, you've been told in previous hearings, that the bank was filled, not just excavated. You were just now told it's excavated and not filled. There's a conflict there. You've been told it wasn't compacted. The engineer just said, well, it maybe wasn't compacted when it was put in. But I think it was put in in 2004. I heard from, from Brian and my client that he believes it was all done in 2006. Engineer said it was in, in 2004, so it's compacted itself by now. Well, Colas said, do you know what kind of soils? If you fill it with water, will it be waterlogged? Will it slump? Will it fall? I don't know what kind of soils there are. To me, I think there are so many engineering questions unanswered by this, I hate to say it, but rudimentary and not very detailed design and certainly not well documented, that it would be wrong to approve that and, and, and find that it will, it will meet your engineering standards. There is also no maintenance plan for it. If these plant, if these basins are going to depend on the underdrain to not slump and not saturate the unconsolidated southern bank, as we were told they would, that was the answer a second ago, how do we know those underdrains aren't going to be clogged up? How often will they be checked and maintained? Is there a maintenance plan provided or any assurance they'll be maintained? Again, I, I suggest the answer is, you have no idea. I have no idea. The drainage plan note four that was corrected and improved as of today to say that periodically monitor the stability of the southerly slope where required employ additional erosion control measures that used to end there, to ensure stop, slope stability, used to end there, and they've now added such as bark mulch layer, loam and seed with jute matting or silt stock. I suggest that is a perfect indication to you that this is an inadequate plan. I mean, if the southern flo, slopes are so uncertain as to their stability in your mind, in their mind, in the applicant's mind, because of the way they were built without permits and without site plan review in 2004 or six or whenever, that is the start of this earth moving. To say to, to the applicant, or to my client who lives directly south of there, right across the line, you know, feet from there, don't worry, they'll periodically check the stability. And during that 75-year storm, when it looks like it's starting to slump, they'll come out with a jute mat. That's too late. That isn't a, a, an adequate substitute for good engineering and a certified plan that says, these slopes are stable, these soils have been tested, the compaction meets construction standards. Here are the calculations on volumes and flows and velocities, all of which are part of engineering and none of which appear on the plan. Let me move on from that because I think we just simply, oh, oh, well, one last point. There was some discussion among board members and questions. Well, who will review that? I would suggest that it isn't, should not be just a matter of a condition subsequent after a site plan approval that they go out and that someone, either Department of Public Works or a hired person goes out to check whether it was done. I think this is one of those cases where you hire a professional engineer at the applicant's expense to check the engineering. You have that right. I think you have that obligation to protect the safety of my client and his land when there's going to be detention pond, five of them, right on his boundary. And I think that your, my, that an engine, an engineer hired to look at that would find that there isn't much engineering even to review. But that's how you will find out if these calculations really have been done. All right, let's talk about salt for a moment. Just to be sure, you have absolute authority to require that this, this continued discharge of that pollutant, salt, be discontinued. And, and I just cite you to section four, B1 and C of your regs, where you are to prevent injury to health, safety or property by reasons of undesirable elements of pollution which might be harmful, et cetera. You have lots of evidence, some of it conflicting admittedly, that there is salt contamination of the soil and the groundwater already. You have different numbers from the different testing. And as we just discussed, 250 milligrams per liter of chlorides is the secondary maximum contaminant level under this Federal Safe Drinking Water Act for drinking water. It is the limit after which it is actionable. It is actually not a health-based limit because salt water doesn't kill you little bits at a time. It is actually based on taste. It's when people take their water and say, oof, I don't want to drink this anymore. And that's a problem if people don't drink water. So the federal standard is based on, on aesthetics and, and taste. But that's the limit. And as Colas pointed out, to not require or be concerned until and unless the groundwater already exceeds the drinking water standard is not too soon, I, I would suggest, but perhaps too late. Let me clarify that there was much talk about the proposed monitoring program that applicant proposed Conservation Commission commented on. And staff rewrote and put into staff recommendation dated today, which I saw as I was sitting here. I don't know what this document that, you know, that was being waved around was, and I don't want to pretend I know which one it is. But there's a vital difference between the first one proposed by Peter Shower on behalf of applicant and what the Conservation Commission approved and which Brian included in his staff recommendation. I favor Brian's version, which I believe is the Conservation Commission's approved version. And I copied it essentially into my letter to you today. The key point there, though I would argue that a number less than 250 would be appropriate. But the key point that differs from his proposal is that he said in his first proposal, if any of these samples come up above 250, that they'll do something about it. That, to me, wasn't enough. Brian's proposal and this, and the Conservation Commission's proposal is at 250 or above. If the test results show levels that exceed the maximum contaminant level, the owner applicant is to cease the use of the salt shed and rectify the matter. So that says, stop operations. That's a lot better than just do something about it over the next year, two years, 10 years. So I would ask that you, if you approve, and I would urge you not to approve the site plan, but if you do, condition it as indicated in the staff report, which includes a shutdown of operations if these samples come up above legal limits. And, and as I'll note, I know that I've only read minutes. I wasn't here at the last meetings. Peter Shower and others said, oh, 250 isn't that high, you know, you know. You can find 250 milligrams per liter of salt in, I don't know, in, in lemon juice or in whatever. I don't remember what example he used. And it isn't an enormous number. It tastes a little bit salty. The point, though, is how much more is it than is in our background groundwater, you know, in Goffstown and throughout New Hampshire? The answer there is the background that you would expect but for a salt shed without a floor is about one to two milligrams per liter. So we're talking about 200 times background, not gee, it's not very salty. Just, I, I'd like you to keep that in, in mind. Answer about the BMPs. The engineer for applicant said he didn't know what the BMPs were. He doesn't know if he designed the shed to meet BMPs. He couldn't honestly say that he had, and I commend him for his honesty in not shining you on about that. I have the BMPs from the DES environmental fact sheet that says, storage and management of salt de-icing materials. And one of the sections under this several-page fact sheet are proposed best management practices. And there are several. Best management practices for locating a new de-icing material storage facility should include the following. So this is at least several of them. And rather than read them to you and ask you to write them into a condition tonight, I would suggest that since he didn't know, since you don't have that as a proposal yet, another reason to continue this until an engineer can tell you if what he cited and designed meets these standards. It's a minimum. Remember, this is an applicant who's done this all illegally up till now and is now asking after the fact to be permitted. I don't think you go overboard to, to, to loosen things in that case. I think you, you require rather rigorous adherence to at least the minimum management practices. And one of them, I will tell you right off the bat, I know it doesn't meet. Because a minimum, one of the BMPs here, one of several, is drainage that is contaminated with salt, should be directed to a sewage treatment plant, subject to municipal approval, collected for use in pre-wetting activities or sent for proper disposal. In other words, collect it and treat it. There's none of that here. I mean, any water that's coming into any of his perforated pipe drainage or swell or, or dry well or whatever, isn't going to be treated. It's discharging right back into the groundwater or out onto the edge of my client's property. There's no treatment proposed whatsoever, and that's a BMP. I would suggest you not approve this site plan on the basis of salt. Site screening, I don't want to take nearly as much time on that because to me, it's much minor, more minor an issue in terms of health and safety at least than a slumping detention pond or, or salt contamination on my client's property. But screening is important. And I will point out that the law in New Hampshire, and I know Jim knows this, is that when you make a representation in an application for a variance that is a significant representation that is a basis for granting the variance, that representation becomes a condition of the variance when it's granted. And that's North Country Environmental Services versus Town of Bethlehem. I won't have to read the site into the reg because you have my letter. And under that requirement, this applicant, in order to get the variance represented to that zoning board, quote, "A butters will be adequately screened from any landscaping business activities." So not just materials and, and equipment, which is the explicit condition. But he represented, it will all be screened, all business activities. I suggest that's not happening here. Very specifically, and I won't waste time on it, he hasn't screened the employee parking, whoops, his, his plan is down. But the employee, employee parking lot in the corner of the property nearest my client's house is not screened at all. There are no trees shown there. And you actually have a requirement in appendix F, section two, subsection four, C, that requires screening of parking lots from residential homes when the parking lot is within 50 feet of the boundary line, which this is far less on this plan. So there's an explicit landscaping requirement in your site plan regs that he hasn't met.
Can I ask you a question, physical question?
Yes.
Is there a barn between Mr. Gibson's house and this parking lot?
A barn?
Yes.
Yes.
So you can't physically see the parking from the house?
You can from his property. You may not be able from his house.
But not the house. You said house.
Well, the question is, who has the obligation to provide the screening? Is it the applicant or?
I understand. Okay. I just, the statement needs to be correct.
Residential home becomes an issue.
You know, I, I, I'm willing to back off on my statement because I don't want to be wrong. If, in fact, and I'm unaware, was unaware of that barn, it can't be seen from the home. The reg is, is that, well, I knew, I saw it a second. It is a requirement to screen from residential homes whenever the parking lot is within 50 feet. So I don't know if it can be seen from any part of his home or not.
Okay.
But I think one ought to look at that and consider requiring some trees, given that he is putting a parking lot, employee parking lot, virtually, you know, on the boundary, not deep into the lot, but near the front, near the house.
Yep.
I would support a requirement that with all these trees and shrubs and understoryed land, that you require 75 foot, 75% three-year survival or something similar because dead trees are no screen at all. The fueling station needs to have more stringent controls. And I think rather than research them all, you ought to at least, if you approve, put in a condition excuse me, all federal, state and local environmental and fire safety codes. My client is convinced, and I don't know enough about it, didn't have enough time, that he doesn't know what kind of tank it is. There are no specs in any of the plans. Is it double walled, single walled? What's the containment going to be? Really, what is this facility? And depending on its construction and all, there are different requirements. And depending on its construction and all, there are different requirements for sighting and protection. And again, it's indicated on the plan as a square. You know, there is no, it's a pad and a square. Well, raised tank, not raised tank. Double wall, single wall. You know, what are we doing? And, you know, that's an important environmental and safety issue. Three more points quickly. I know it's very late. Lots of stuff has been installed on this site without any permits. Drainage pipe or drainage ditch that crosses the property marked as being a proposed 130 linear foot 18-inch perforated pipe. I don't think that it meets the Appendix C, Section 5S, engineering requirements for subsurface drainage. They're really explicit in your regs, you know, sizing, depth, all kinds of stuff. Lots of engineering involved in how to do subsurface drainage. Again, it shows a pipe. It shows none of those criteria in your regs and how it meets them. And I don't see a supplementary page or plan on that. I may have missed it, but I believe that you need to either require that be done or that it be taken out and something installed that does meet current site plan regs. Just because it's in there already should not give him, you know, an advantage, but he should start at ground zero. And finally, I have a number of conditions that I want to list to you that, again, I'd rather you disapprove this as premature and not meeting the standards and not meeting the burden of proving that they've met the standards. But, if not, here's what I would ask. As I said under a little earlier, when an applicant says, "Here's what I'm going to do, that's why I don't diminish abutting property values, therefore, you know, you can give me the variance," and absolutely represents it, then that that representation becomes a condition of the approval. And here's what he said in his application, not verbally, written in his variance application, Page 2. Workdays are limited to weekdays only, and employees will come and go from the property only at the beginning and end of each workday. Only four to five employees will park their cars on the property during that time. Therefore, any business-related traffic or noise will be minimal and restricted to normal working hours. So, I suggest those become conditions of the variance because he made them so by representing that would be, that would be the basis on which they could grant the variance. Therefore, and I won't read them to you because you've got it in writing, but I'd like you to limit, if you grant at all, the landscaping business to weekdays only. That's what he said. And to normal working hours. So, that's, so that my client at least isn't, you know, bothered at 11:00 PM with landscaping business stuff going on. And you might set the hours and define what normal working hours are. You certainly have the right to set, you know, hours of operation under your site plan regs. You should set the maximum number of employees. You should also indicate the two things that are indicated by Derek in his letter of June 7th that I have attached just for your convenience. There shall be no wholesale or retail sales of materials from the site. That requires a different approval from the zoning board. He doesn't have. There shall be no processing of materials on site. I note that they've added that newly as a note, so they do not disagree with that, but it's an important limitation. You ought to repeat the variance requirements, and I've repeated them just so they're all on one document. You know, you can only grant a site plan approval consistent with the variance. So, repeating their requirement of the impervious floor and the salt shed and 25-foot setbacks, I think, would be wise. And I request two other conditions, and I'll shut up, and I'll be as happy as you about doing that. And that is, I would suggest that you not allow or limit on your plan approval, if you approve, that any washing of equipment or vehicles be done on an impervious surface with the washwater captured for degreasing and appropriate treatment before discharge. I mean, you have all this equipment running around, you're fueling it, you're doing all kinds of work. You put it out there in the yard in front of the barn and wash it all down, you're washing oil, grease, gas, brake fluid, all the rest of it, fertilizers, everything you're using in your landscaping business that you're spilling on the spreaders or whatever, right onto the soil and right into the groundwater and right onto my client's property. So, if you're going to do all that, it ought to be done in a contained area and that stuff captured and degreased. And finally, I'd suggest that because this applicant has operated for years without site plan approval or building permit, has ceased doing a few things according to a stop work order and emptied the salt shed, you nonetheless require, not that he keep operating as going and slowly put in and do these various things that you may require as condition subsequent, but that he stop operating illegally until and unless and in all the work required by a site plan approval is completed and inspected and checked off, and when he is legal, he resume. That's not cruel or unusual. That's what the law would require, that he not operate until he's approved. And again, I don't suggest that you bend over backwards to allow him to operate because you don't want to stop him when his operation is currently illegal. He has not, he does not have site plan approval to be running a landscaping business in this agricultural zone. He does not have it today. He should not be operating until he has site plan approval. I apologize for how long it took me. I didn't time myself, but I've sat here a long time and a lot needed to be said. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you. Members of the board, do we have any questions with the, Mr. Callen?
Thank you.
Seeing none at the moment. Any observations or questions from members of the board? I would give the applicant an opportunity to address any issues briefly, please.
Again, my name is Kevin Bobb. If I could just briefly rebut some of the statements made by Attorney Callen. One, on the engineering calculations, there is a separate document provided. I'm looking over Megan's shoulder before and seeing it. So, that document exists and it's certainly available. I don't know the date on that, but it has been, older versions have certainly been in the record and this is available to everyone now. The salt monitoring, there's no question what has been proposed by the Conservation Commission and what we proposed as our current plan. The intent is that those are the same. So, certainly, we're in agreement that what Brian has included in his recommendations is what we would live with and what we're proposing as the current. Regarding screening, just like to clarify that what was written in the zoning application was that there was adequate screening. And there is adequate screening. It's the existing vegetation between the two properties. If some of that vegetation is going to be removed to move the driveway to serve for safety reasons, certainly wouldn't have a problem with adding some more landscaping. But, I want to clarify, you've all been out there, or most of you have been out there for the site walk, there is significant vegetation between the two properties that acts as screening. The 18-inch drainage pipe, I'm not really clear on that. That is marked as proposed on the plan and is proposed, it has not been installed at this, you know, at this point. And then regarding the limitations on hours and on washing vehicles, just ask that, you remember that this is a working business and that, ask that Mr. Forney's landscaping business is, and residential, he was as treated as anyone else would be in the agricultural zone. Limitations on hours, the major concern is that, you know, those would be normal working hours for a landscaping business, and that includes snow removal. That doesn't mean that there will be people going, operating on site, but there will be vehicles coming and going for snow emergencies. That's just a fact of life. And we just ask that this site plan and this business is treated as any other landscaping business in the Town of Goffstown and the agricultural zone.
Thank you. Members of the board have any final questions for the applicant or any of the presenters I am not going to close the public hearing as of yet until we have some discussion as to whether there was to be any further considerations or the board wishes to wait for submission or presentation of any additional information.
If I just have a question for Megan. Were drainage calculations done?
Yes. This is the version I got yesterday. There have been several of these that, I don't know how many are available through planning board, but, you know, we're talking down to gritty, gritty numbers, you know. I don't even know, you know, how much, I guess if you saw one book versus the other, where you can be able to find the changes. I know where they are, just saying. You know, obviously, this is all open to the public and they can review this, but you got to know exactly what you're looking for and what numbers. And we were down to some changes where it was really, the reason we made this last change is because it was more, I want to say, interpretation of the rules. He interpreted one way, I interpreted one way, talked to Carl, kind of got his version of it and went back to him and we made some minor changes on it. But, the overall concept is still the same. The pond sizing didn't change at all. It was all that happened was a bleeder pipe was added to slowly release water instead of forcing to hold all of the water and then overflow it. Because when we were doing that, too much water was getting out. And so, by adding the bleeder pipe and allowing a small amount of water to get out during any storm, it decreased the amount during the 50-year storm. It actually made the situation better. And as you said, the 50-year post-storm is less than the 25-year pre. So, it improved and made it less flows. And all those numbers are in here. But, there have been other versions, you know, several other versions of this. So, I don't know, you know, if anybody's reviewed any other versions, but this was the latest, and I did get it yesterday and just checked those last couple of numbers on a few of the sheets. You know, you got a big booklet. I probably checked five or, you know, 10 of the sheets because we checked five sheets for one, two, and five sheets for the other. You know, so it's all, it's all one book that you get, but there's only a few numbers that really needed to be checked in this last iteration.
Would you have considered the change in this last version to be substantive?
No. I mean, the only reason, last week when I had reviewed this, and I apologize to the applicant's engineer because they submitted this information to me over a month ago, about a month ago I got it. And I've just been out straight and busy and hadn't had a chance to get to it. And I got to it last minute. I thought this last, the middle I had gotten a month ago was going to be all set, there wouldn't be any problems. So, when I got to it and found, well, I interpreted differently than them, that required this last new submission. So, that should have been done a month ago. I just hadn't gotten to it. So, that is partly my fault. I really don't consider it material, but because drainage is such a sensitive subject, last week when I was providing my comments, I told Brian that because there was still an outstanding drainage issue, it wasn't 100% resolved, I felt as though, you know, he should have the compliance hearing. If the staff recommendation was going to be approved--
As I noticed that there's a compliance hearing in October 14th scheduled. Okay, that's why--
Yeah, that's why I put that, was because of this last issue. But, it's resolved. Because I felt as though when you got your mailing, it wasn't 100% resolved and I--
All right. So, that's why the October 14th.
And Mr. Chair and members of the board, if I can comment on this as well. If it's a concern that there was not adequate notice to the public for whatever reason on that, on this issue, the compliance hearing can remain as a condition of approval, allowing public enough time to take a look and see for themselves whether or not the drainage issue has been done. And then the compliance hearing would just reiterate, you know, that fact. So, I mean, if that's, if that's an issue, then that compliance hearing could stay in this, in the conditions.
The last draft, so to speak, before this bleeder pipe was a month ago.
Correct.
Okay.
Other members of the board? If we have a compliance hearing and there might be other issues, do we want to leave the public hearing open? We can't. It's still, we can't, we can't adjudicate on this without closing the public hearing, can we? No. What would be the vehicle to take additional information beyond this point if we take action this evening?
If there is none.
There is none, right?
Yes. You, in my view, if you approve where the condition subsequent has to be met--
Mm-hmm.
And you have a hearing to determine that it's been done, or you set up a condition that has to be met.
Yeah.
Or final. But, you've limited the outstanding issues to that, whatever you have in the compliance hearing. Typically, you have those when either the further information requires some more than administrative approval. That's something the public's entitled to comment on. But, it's limited to that. So, if you want to otherwise act, we would close the public hearing and have identified that as a matter to be heard as to ensure compliance. Those are your choices.
Okay. Members of the board, how do you feel? Go around the room. Corey?
Not Corey.
You just can't get over that, can you? Carl, we're going to, we'll bring a sign.
I got it written right in front of me. It's right here.
We'll bring a sign next time, and every time he looks over here, I'll hold it up.
I did, I did propose name tags at one point in time.
Stop that.
Well, he's just doing a hybrid. Carl Foley becomes Corey.
I still think that could be a useful item here.
I should have certain cheers.
Yes, so the chair can't remember people's names. That's correct. Carl.
I would be inclined to continue this, seeing that we just did receive some of this information, this plan this evening.
Tim?
It should be continued.
Colas?
Yeah, I think we need additional information. I'm reluctant to continue it because we've got an operation that's ongoing. It's illegal and it's causing disruption of abutting property owners. I don't want to drag us out any more than we have to, but I, my biggest concern right now is the slope stability and soils on this property. We got soils that were placed there. We don't know what kind of soils they were. They don't know how they were compacted or if they were compacted. We don't know what load, their load-bearing capacity is, and yet we're proposing development on top of them. I want to see a technical report by a soils engineer saying that the fill is suitable and it's structural fill and it can support these things. He may come back and say, "You know what? It's structural and not sound, and it needs to come out and be replaced with structural fill." If that's the case, you know, we've got a major issue here to deal with. So, that's my biggest concern at this point. To have the representation, what's been there for a few years, it's probably compacted itself. Doesn't cut it with me. And that's a significant technical issue that's going to take some time to be resolved if that's what the board's inclined to do.
Barbara?
Well, I say this as the person who could not do the site walk because my left foot was disabled, so I comment now with my right foot disabled. So, I understand, and I've missed one meeting, I believe, on this. But, there have been a number of meetings about this. So, asking for a soils sample now, I don't quite understand where that's coming because I don't know that there's been any substantive change in the issue of the slope and the fact that there were going to be some sort of treatment of the runoff along that slope. And quite frankly, I don't think it's fair to the applicant to be raising that now. I am reluctant to continue this because the applicant has made a heck of a presentation with his staff here in regards to the issues that are presented. I also have to say that Attorney Callen's presentation focused on the issues, and I, and if I can just say why I am not inclined to continue it, I think Attorney Callen's or the substantive, comments are the substantive ones that need to be addressed. In regards to the detention pond, there is the soil issue that was raised, which I've just made my comment on. I don't believe, after listening to the comments tonight, that these plans have been submitted late. I understand that there was a change yesterday, but it's my understanding this plan has been available for over a month, and I don't, I haven't heard from anybody that there was a request made for the plan previously. The comment is just that it just came in and therefore it shouldn't-- The comment is just that it just came in and therefore it shouldn't be approved and that the change was not substantive. There was a question about the calculations, whether they were done, they were done. So, from what I heard, this information has been available and sounds like it's adequate, absent this new issue in regards to some sort of test pits or soils. In regards to the salt discharge issue, again, I think a valid issue raised. I will note that on page three of Attorney Callen's letter, the three bullets in regards to the monitoring points have all been incorporated into the comments from Conservation and the document prepared by the applicant, which has been presented to us. I would also note that the three-year testing requirement was incorporated into the document from the Conservation Commission and that submitted by the applicant to us. I will also note that the standard of 250 milligrams per liter is suggested by Attorney Callen is in, in fact, what is in what was submitted by Conservation and the applicant. The difference in the salt comment appears to be what I would almost refer to as sort of an evidence-checking issue of requiring various samples, chains of custodies, and all sorts of people getting to do their own test. We've already been through that with this application. I don't think that gets us anywhere. We, it, it sounds like there was an agreement with Conservation and the applicant on testing, it sounded adequate to me. In regards to the site screening, I think the substantive issues were the 75% for three years. And there was an issue as to whether or not there, there was an issue for employee parking appeared to be the valid issue raised. I would hope that the part, the board could raise the issue of screening for parking. And as to the fueling station, I certainly think the, the comment by Attorney Callen that it meet federal, state, and fire safety codes is appropriate. It was my understanding from Don Duvall's presentation that I think there are ballards that were required by the fire station and that there had been an agreement to do that. I'm confused about the eighteen-inch pipe. I didn't view that as, I viewed that as something we could discuss. And I think we need to have a discussion and an exact thing of the, the variance in regards to the operation, because I think normal working hours for an agricultural zone in regards to a landscaping business are subject to much discussion. And I recall this board placed very few limits on an application for a landscaping business that was in a commercial district right next to some residents in Pinnardville. So I appreciate that there are a number of issues here. And I don't even know if we began discussion that we finished tonight, given that I know at least one other person would think that 11 o'clock would be the zombie hour, but, you know, I think those are the issues that I've seen as raised by the abutter through council. I think they're valid issues, and it appeared to me that the majority of them had been addressed generally and in some cases specifically. So to me, after hearing one, two, three, the, the big issue, as far as I can see, is an issue being raised by a board member who's been present for all of these applications, for all of these discussions in regards to whether we're going to require some sort of soil testing, and I don't know what that would be.
All due respect, Barbara, we didn't know the specific arrangement or configuration of detention basins where they were going to go until tonight. And tonight there were representations made that, I don't know what the soils were, I think they're compacted okay. There were representations made to treatment. I think it's getting treated, I'm not sure how it's getting treated. I think it's a combination of stuff, I'm not really sure what it is. So to me, there, there was testimony presented tonight, there was new testimony that is pretty weak, in my opinion, so we can disagree on that.
I just thought the treatment had always been proposed on that side.
Let's stop the disagreements and move over to this side of the table here. Phil, you got any observations on this?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think Barbara did a pretty good wrap-up on pretty much, pretty much the issues. I personally don't have a problem going forward with it, but I, I, looking at the hour and knowing about the 11 o'clock posed the curfew, would probably be an issue anyway.
In our rules.
Exactly, exactly. But we could always waive the rules, too. But I think one, one thing that was, is that I'd like to point out is on Brian Rose's supplemental to us, his key considerations is the plans were submitted three weeks prior to the meeting, giving staff ample time for review. I mean, we did get these, I did have a time, you know, I did have time to go through here. You know, there, there are, I thought that the landscaping plan was quite impressive, the size of the trees, considering some of the prior applications that we've done with some screening, such as, I won't mention the site, but on the back road that we all know about. And if something like this was presented by that, we may not have the issues. I, I think, you know, the, I'm just looking at that side of the table because you're in front of me. You know, the other side of the table, I know what you're referring to.
All right.
Exactly.
We won't point at the guilty people.
No, no, I'm not trying to point at anybody.
I know, I know, I know.
I don't think we're getting dinner tonight.
Let's move right over here to Steve.
Yeah, I, I would not be inclined to continue it except for, given the time and the number of issues involved, I think that, that sort of sways me to thinking that perhaps we should continue this to when we have more time to adequately consider all the moving parts here.
Tim?
I share Carlos's concern in, in response to Barbara's question, there was testimony on the bank at the, I think it was the last hearing.
July meeting.
Yeah, and the applicant really being warned that that was an issue, I think had an obligation to come prepared to respond to it. And I think the response tonight was more conclusory than backed up, so it was, it was presented to them and I don't think it was doubtful. So I share Carlos's concern. And even if we weren't going forward, I'd, I'd want to continue this because I, I need time to formulate a motion if we're going to approve, because the recommendations from Mr. Rose don't address many of the points that we've discussed. So it's going to, it's going to take a more detailed form of conditions than we have in front of us. That just takes some time to develop. Whether you need a public hearing to do that, or you just continue, close the public hearing. But for this slope issue, I think you could decide, but that has to remain open, I want to hear more on that.
If you don't close the public hearing, you allow the applicant and the presenters to be, be sure they review any documentation beforehand so that there's no miscarriage of information. And secondly, if, if there's going to be a, a concern with the soils on that banking, we would want to request that somebody provide us some information. I know there were test pits dug on that banking, and based upon some earlier testimony, but I don't know whether anybody analyzed it, the soil materials, I don't remember reading anything about that. So I would undertake a motion to continue.
And make that motion.
To our next meeting?
Well, I'm not sure that's enough time to have the information. Carlos, you're a better judge of the time required to develop that information, submit it to the board in time for others to review it. For the, the banking stability. Because if you have two weeks-
I would think the onus is on the, excuse me, I would think the onus would be on the applicant to be timely.
Well, correct, but it's, if it's going to be heard two weeks from now, it's got to be in in time for others to review it, which means that you've done the next three weeks.
Yeah, and I imagine it would require somebody to go out and do some borings and look at the fill material.
I just don't know that that's feasible.
Yes, Phil?
Will we ask the applicant's engineer how much time he would need to do that? He's the one doing it.
You know, I'm not trying to be obstructionist here, you know, I want to bring this to conclusion so we can, but, you know, we can talk about aesthetics, we can talk about noise, but this is a life safety issue. If we get failure of that slope, this is a life safety issue, this is important. This, in my, my mind, is the most important issue that needs to be addressed. All the rest of the stuff we can deal with, noise, hour of operations, screening, landscaping, we're going to deal with all of that through conditions.
Attorney Baum, how soon could you get a representation of the questions just posed here at the board?
Well, I couldn't fully hear, but just to clarify, I think I heard Mr. Adams talking about geotechnical.
Yes.
So you're, I mean, I think we would, we'd certainly need more than two weeks to get geotechnical and our work done. Do you have a sense, Don?
Say, I would look at somebody like Miller Testing, I think they'd be, actually, I mean, Meg is, or Baum, you had asked, too. Would you agree with that, somebody like Miller Testing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious what cost, I guess, you know, we're talking G- GSI, Miller, that type of thing.
Yeah, 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 those kind of people, yeah.
I mean, are we looking at compassion tests or is that too?
I would assume that they'd come in and do some borings and look at the fill and render a professional opinion as to whether or not it's structurally suitable. You know, I don't, you don't know if there's organics in there, if there's wood debris that was put in there. We have no clue what was put in there. And, and again, it's a life safety issue, so I think that rises to a whole different level.
I say I won't get into it now, but Peter Shaw did, they pretty much test this, and he, and again, so I don't want to get into the whole thing of what's in there.
I'll just respond to that, he dug test pits to determine whether or not fill was placed on wetlands, he did nothing to analyze the soils.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. I said, we just addressed the issue of whether they-
Gentlemen, gentlemen, Chair will make a decision.
October fourteenth, I think.
One month.
I'd make that motion.
October fourteenth?
Fourteenth is on our list.
I take a motion to, a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
You can speak.
Could I just ask a quick question prior to us act, acting on a continuous act, or motion? And that would be for the applicant to address each of the conditions proposed by Baldwin and Callen, so that these issues may be, if they're acceptable to the applicant, included into the report for a further, for the next time. So that way it's not going to be lacking as much information if, if there's an issue with lacking information.
I mean, in all fairness, I think that's up to the applicant, and quite honestly, half of them are already considered, so.
I understand that, and I'm just-
We have the material to review.
Duly noted, and it'll be in the minutes. We had, all those in favor say aye. Opposed?
On October fourteenth?
Motion carries unanimously, October fourteenth, continuance. Public hearing is still open.
All right, I'm just going to note for our planner, please, Mr. Rose, that I'm looking at the other item on this, that we've got it on October fourteenth, so we have a couple of discussion matters, right?
Yep.
Hopefully the rest of it, these end of that night won't be too much. Disturbing other people.
We just continued two things.
That night, were they both to that night?
Yeah, Black Friday went to that day.
I want to ask, I want to ask, I want to ask a technical question, we still have one?
We never did a-
Case to adjudicate, and that is the, um, phasing, we didn't vote on that.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Yeah, I just have one question, though, for the, for the board.
Yes.
From a previous meeting. How is, how is the association and the control of the open phase going to be handled if only phase one gets built? Test pit one, test pit three. We want the test pits here.
Technically speaking, if the plan is recorded, the open space exists from day one.
I didn't mean to mark that out.
And that, um-
Exactly, that's my point.
Did you see the pile I got downstairs on the ping pong table?
Can't you imagine? I understand this. The open space for the entire project?
Yes.
Okay, and what happens in phase two and phase three, don't get built? Are we still discussing? No, I'm just asking.
He's asking a question. I have no clue. You can do anything you want, I'll take a motion to adjudicate.
I thought he said any other business.
I have no clue.
When are you meeting next? This, this has to do with the Walton.
Did he come in after we continued?
He's sitting here all night.
Oh, no, we had continued that meeting.
What time did you get here?
Seven fifteen.
He had already done it.
No, we didn't, not at seven fifteen.
We probably weren't clear, the Waltons, the application was never considered, the application is, was not accepted. We made a motion to not accept it.
Oh, goodness, so I missed that?
Yes, so, thank you for putting up with us for the last three hours.
Oh, wait, just so that you understand, they never had an application here for any discussion, because we didn't accept it.
So nothing will be happening.
Because they were supposed, there was a change after.
So it's never, it was never submitted?
Well, there, there was an application, however, it wasn't up to standard for being able, being able to accept it.
That's the first thing you do, is determine whether it's acceptable, and it didn't meet the standard.
And that was the reason for the hearing tonight.
Well, you're welcome to come to our next meeting, you're all-
Will it come up again?
If it does, you will be notified.
You'll be re-notified.
I don't know, how long have they been there?
Yes, Brian?
Do you want to bring up the ZBA topic of discussion from two, two nights ago?
Not really, we went down the flames at the ZBA, and although we all got notices.
The appeal?
The appeal to, on the, on, on, yeah, that's what, my question.
On the car storage?
Car storage salvage broker.
I, I got notified Tuesday morning at eight o'clock on my cellphone, and the hearing was Tuesday night. And so I, I busted around, Brian and I busted around and showed up here Tuesday night to the zoning board. But to my knowledge, no one ever received a notice.
Well, the, the notice, the only notice that was provided, at least to this appeal, was to myself, which I had thought that the notice had been subsequently also mailed to the planning board and the chair. And it was not, so. That might be an issue to bring up.
So they appealed our-
We, we appealed that the zoning administrator's decision about a junkyard.
Auto salvage dealer.
Whether it was permissible, at all.
Whether he could establish a class and what it most closely resembled.
And we didn't-
And it did not get, Derek's decision basically was upheld, that it was allowed under the sales of automobiles and boats and-
And, and the reason was that manufactured homes is prohibited in the zoning ordinance and also in the table of uses. It has manufactured homes.
Because it wasn't specifically prohibited as a junkyard.
It wasn't specifically prohibited in the table of uses, and we had that discussion.
That's, that's a backwards interpretation, maybe.
That's a completely backwards interpretation, and we should have gotten a notice of that.
I've got a field that notice now.
I don't have a problem with that.
You apply, you have to apply, the official way to do that is you make an application for a rehearing.
However, I was told by Derek that the planning board cannot do a rehearing with the ZBA. It has to come from the, the board of selectmen, based on some previous law keys.
We're not a separate.
The only other option, and we sort of discussed this afterwards, was to just, you know, in our upcoming meeting, we're going to be discussing proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. Let that go aside and let their decision be whatever it is, and change the zoning ordinance to specifically prohibit whatever you want to prohibit.
But that's sort of not the issue, the issue is a disagreement over the interpretation and the process, we should have been notified of-
Yeah, because court cases have been decided on people not being notified.
Well, the question is, are we entitled to, we, we, we're not a separate, and we're a board of town, but it doesn't give us separate rights as, as the town. So I, and I don't know the answer to that, but it is an issue, I'm not sure we have, I'm not sure we have appeals. I li, I didn't say anything on that, because I figured it'd slip right by, but they are flat-ass wrong in their interpretation of the ordinance, and it's written based upon a-
We're still in session.
Permissive ordinance, it means they do what is permitted in your ordinance, that's the basis of it.
Ask this in the dictionary.
Well, but the, the basis is that Derek has the opportunity to, uh, decide whether or not something fits within a category that is in the zoning ordinance.
That's, that's correct, but it's not that, if it's not prohibited, it's allowed, it's, is it sufficiently close to a permitted use to be permitted, and that's his job, but, but that's not what I heard them saying. They're saying because it wasn't prohibited.
It's allowed.
Yeah, that was one of the statements from the board.
And that's wrong.
But the other one was that.
Well, it can be allowed, and he made that decision that it can be allowed, and they were upholding that.
But that's not how we look at it.
Well, we have another option. Why is only administrator, get a new one? Yes, we are, it can be in the record.
It's the, it's the designation for me.
Can I say something from the meeting?
She's a member of the ZBA.
One of the things we who.
Voted in favor.
I voted for the planning board. Um, one of the things that we did emphasize was that even though this is Derek's decision, the zoning board by itself is not held to his decision, we can still vote freely from that. What?
That is true.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that may be true, but when you've had an appeal and you've made a determination now, you're gonna be pretty hard pressed to make a different determination. We've essentially raised the appeal issue in regards to interpretation, and you've already taken a position on it.
Mm-hmm.
You'll yell a gale.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to gale.
I, I was.
I was on your side.
It was a great, it, it was a great two-hour session in front of the ZBA, I'm telling you, and we were last. What time we get out, eleven thirty?
Ten, ten forty-five.
Ten forty-five.
It's ten fifty-five now.
It's three to, it's three to two.
We beat 'em.
We make a motion to adjourn.
Yes, you may.
Get in, call us second.
You don't have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Before you vote on that, just let me make one statement, that our, uh, town attorney, uh, claims that, uh, his, uh, part of the reason for his success, high success in, uh, defending our cases is because of the, uh, hard work and the good hard work that the staff provides him with the backup on the cases.
I don't doubt that.
That would be a certified copy of the record, please.
Uh, no, it's a little bit more than that, Barbara. And I'll, I'll still drop you off if you need a ride.
I don't need a ride, that's the only reason I said that.
I.
Oh, I think we voted with our feet.
What's that?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.